Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December 14, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacob Soroka, please.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticius.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Milton Smith, the chaplain of Tarpon Springs Police and Fire Department, following by the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us bow in prayer. As we have come to the last month of the year 2021, we look back over the year and in the midst of everything, we still give thanks. We are grateful for life in this beautiful city. We are thankful for your grace and your mercy, for blessing the city of Tarpon Springs to do great things. We are grateful for our mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, and staff. We pray your blessings upon our fire departments and police departments. Keep them safe as we prepare to enter a new year. During this holiday season, please grant your peace and your goodwill towards all residents and visitors of Tarpon Springs. We ask these blessings in the name of the one who was born to save us all. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be advised that at 7:30, the public hearing portion of the meeting will start. Once the public hearing portion is completed, we will continue the meeting from where left off. Also like to remind to everyone the base of the city rules and procedures. All public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect, without personal attacks. Also, cheering and clapping is not permitted during the debate, and I want to thank you for your cooperation. And now, we're going to go to the public comments on the items will not be discussed this evening. If anyone has any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be getting, you'll be given four minutes.
My name is David Ballard Geddes, Jr. I live on, I live at 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor, down by Pop Stansel Park. I frequently attend a lot of meetings at SWF MUD and as well at Tampa Bay Water Authority. My concern as of late regarding reclaimed water is the direct injecting of reclaimed water into the aquifer. I feel as though taking a chlorinated nitrate load, once the reclaimed water is filtered, chlorinated, and directly injected into the aquifer, the chlorine itself goes inert. And what we're left with is a nitrate load which has been directly injected into our aquifer. I don't feel as though this is a sound practice of government. I feel as though direct injecting reclaimed water into the aquifer will cause complications years down the road that we haven't seen before in regards to our water quality in the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Hear none? Thank you.
Can I make a clarifying comment?
No. You really have to? Go ahead, go ahead.
I just, I want to make a clarifying comment that Tarpon Springs doesn't directly put any reclaimed water into the aquifer. A comment was made tonight in public comment that does it not apply to Tarpon Springs. If there's any excess reclaimed water, it does get discharged, but it does not go into the aquifer. Thank you.
We now go into the consent agenda.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. I didn't realize that was in the public. If I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good evening, gentlemen. So tonight, I'd like to share with you Psalm 12. Help, Lord, for the godly are no more. The faithful have vanished from among men. Everyone lies to his neighbor; their flattering lips speak with deception. May the Lord cut off all flattering lips and every boastful tongue that says, "We will triumph with our tongues." We own our lips. Who is our master? Because of the oppression of the weak and the groaning of the needy, "I will now rise," says the Lord. "I will protect them from those who malign them." And the words of the Lord are flawless, like silver refined in a furnace of clay purified seven times. O Lord, you will keep us safe and protect us from such people forever. The wicked freely strut about what is vile, when what is vile is honored among men. And lastly, Psalm 63, 6 through 11. On my bed I will remember you. I think of you through the watches of the night, because you are my help. I sing in the shadows of your wing. I stay close to you. Your right hand upholds me. They who seek my life will be destroyed. They will go down to the depths of the earth. They will be given over to the sword and become food for the jackals. But the king will rejoice in God. All who swear by God's name will praise him, while the mouths of liars will be silenced. I thank you for your time. May you all have a Merry Christmas in the true spirit, not the consumerism that abounds around us.
You change your mic?
You noticed that, huh?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive, yes. I was a little bit late getting here last week, so I didn't get to compliment the staff and the city of Tarpon Springs. It was an amazing event that we had. There's no place like Tarpon. And I also wanted to compliment all the staff and everybody that was involved in the parade. It was a stupendous event. I didn't really see anybody but smiling faces. So that's what I'd like to share, and it was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually what makes Tarpon Tarpon. It was really nice.
Forte Coolianus, 1185 South Pennels Avenue. Today, I had the pleasure of joining Ms. Emily Taman, who is the local artist that is currently leading the community mural project in downtown Tarpon Springs. In the short two hours or so that I got to spend painting with her, at least two dozen pedestrians walked by and had nothing but wonderful things to say, taking pictures, admiring the project, and voicing how much they appreciated it. Another 10 to 15 cars drove by, honking their horn, flashing a thumbs up, and it was really nice to have people together doing that. So I would just like to, you know, make a recommendation that maybe this young lady be honored with a key to the city for contributing with her gift of talent to the city in a way that, you know, isn't spending taxpayer money. She did all of this through fundraising, and it's a, it's a pretty large-scale project. It's really nice. She's, she's got a lot of stuff out there that she purchased with her fun, funds that she raised, and the volunteers that are getting together really seem to be enjoying working together as a community. So I'd love to see more of that happen, and maybe we could encourage people to step up and do that by showing her that we appreciate it. So I'd like you guys to consider that, please. Thank you.
Craig Lunt, 743 Chesapeake, Tarpon Springs. I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with our police force on Saturday night. I just wanted at this time to publicly thank our Chief Young, his administration staff, and all the officers that were involved during the night, especially Sergeant Lemon, who I accompanied. One of the things that I found out was it was a really interesting look from the other side of the window on the city, and I could not believe the compassion and the dedication that our officers served with. It was really an eye-opener, and I really want to congratulate and support them all. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Okay, we now go into the consent agenda. Number one is the satisfaction release of liens. Number two is the attorney fees. A, Trask Edinol, December 2, 2021. B is Johnson and Jackson invoice 8773. Item number three is ratifying and increase the file number 180031 BCM Yard Waste Disposal. Number four is to approve the grant application for Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. And we will also have an addendum number one, approval of expenditures for Hanya Sister City 20 visit. Any of the items that you'd like to pull? Hear none? We're going to go to the public comments of the items one through four and the addendum. Do you have any public comments? I hear none. The Chair will adjutant motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda, items one through four, plus the addendum to the consent item one.
Second. Are there any commission comments? Hear none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticius.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes, thank you. And now we go into the special consent agenda. Item number five is the strategic plan update. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Would like to introduce Angela Christ with University of South Florida Institute of Government, and she will be giving you the update this evening.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you. We have had just a delightful time working on this project, and just want to bring you up to speed on kind of where we are and what the next steps are. So, and I'll just preface what I'm about to say with, there are some reports that are currently on Connect Tarpon related to some of these slides. The remainder of the reports will be there on Friday or by Friday. So there's a lot more detailed information in the written reports, but I did just want to make sure that you understood for you as well as for the public that there are some there, and the remainder will be there by Friday. Okay? All right, and please feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. So I did just want to comment very briefly and say, I know that when we started this process, we really weren't partnering at the time with SPC Collaborative Labs, but then we decided to jointly come back to you. And I will just say that they have been a wonderful partner, that it has really been a great opportunity for both entities, USF and SPC. And so it's actually leading to a lot more collaborative partnerships. So you guys were the catalyst that did that, so I really did want to say thank you for that. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about Phase One. Phase One, there were several different steps in it. You can see the yellow checks. That is what has been completed to date, and I'm going to talk a little bit about each of those in a second. We completed the strategic alignment workshop with all of you back in July. We also held a kickoff and work plan refinement with the city manager and his leadership team that was held in August. We conducted a virtual citizen engagement session, virtually in August. I conducted stakeholder interviews. We also had the resident survey, feedback survey, which had been in the field, and we had an employee survey that was also in the field. And then we did conduct, I believe it was last week, the employee focus group. So you'll see coming up in January and February, we'll be talking about community forums and what will be happening there, and then we'll come back in March and kind of, and wrap up Phase One of this process. Okay, I'm sure this looks familiar, but it's been a while. So I just wanted to refresh. As you recall, we had a great retreat or workshop on July 17th with all of you, with the mayor and commission, and it really gave us an opportunity to focus on the current successes that everyone sees, as well as kind of future successes. And so I just want to highlight a couple of areas. And so you can see current successes, obviously a lot about the natural resources, the history and the heritage of the city, the waterways, making sure that you have a balanced budget, making sure preservation. SPC was listed on there, but these were things that you as a mayor and commission said that you were very proud of. Some of the things that you talked about in terms of future successes was maintaining that rich heritage and that culture, preserving what you currently have, also being able to plan for things such as climate change and tree canopies, as well as looking at prosperity from planning efforts. So whether it's smart codes or implementation of different types of ways for transportation, and then again, improving traffic mobility. So the reason I'm sharing these with you is you're going to begin to see as we go through this process, these slides, that there are some strategic themes that are starting to merge from all the data we collected. So the other part I wanted to share, if you remember the True North activity that we did, and so a lot of you fell into these categories in terms of, you know, some of you, your style is you're very acting and you want to get it done. Others of you are, well, you know, I, I want to get it done, but I need a little bit more information. You can see the big picture. And then some of you, you want to know every single detail, and that's okay. But I think the most important thing that came out of all of this was that all of you care very much about what you do, and so that is definitely, definitely seen. And then the last part about what we did was we created core values or guiding principles. And so those are really focused on, those are those behaviors that are non-negotiable. Those are the things that you want to say, this is how we're going to act as a city, as a community. And that began the dialogue. And so you guys came up with six. Citizens First, Strategic Decision Making, Fiscal Responsibility, Communication, Visionary Leadership, and Preservation. So this was our starting point. So then what we did was, as I mentioned, we had a kickoff and work plan refinement with the city manager and his leadership team, and we basically went through how we were going to communicate, what was the best way to get information out to the public and to the residents. We talked about reporting, showed them some samples, again, really some kind of behind-the-scenes administrative, making sure that we had the right players at the table and who needed to be there. But the other thing that we did is we also wanted to share with them where you had started in terms of guiding principles. And so we shared this with them, and we had a great conversation, and some of the feedback that we received was, maybe we should narrow it down, maybe six is too many. Could we possibly change or include preservation in an overall statement, right? So maybe we could include preservation as part of the strategic decision-making. Is there a way to, to maybe combine strategic decision-making and visionary leadership? So again, these were just discussions. One of the other really important points that came out of that meeting was they felt that maybe we should change the word fiscal to financial, that it would resonate more with the, with the public and with citizens. So I just wanted to kind of share with you kind of where they were. They also had an opportunity to kind of take these and say, this is what's most important. And so you can see from the staff perspective, 36% of those participating at the time, Citizens First was the number one thing. And you will see that, you will see that throughout in a second as well. Okay, so this is a word cloud or word art, and I just want to talk a little bit about the stakeholder interviews. You had submitted 25 names. I was able to get ahold of and meet with, as of today, I think I have 17 or 18 that I've completed, so that's actually pretty good. I did just want to share with you a couple of things that came out of the stakeholder interviews. So one of the things that, one of the questions that I asked was, and it's, it's pretty difficult, honestly, I need you to give me three words, and only words, that describe the city to you. And so I just want to share with you some of the things that came up from the stakeholder interviews. Again, you're starting to see this connection across all of the mayor and commission, the staff, the community, you're going to see that. So we heard beauty, historic, heritage, culture, waterfront, sense of community, and people. We heard a lot more, but those were the top ones, again, going back to the data from a few minutes ago. Also, I conducted a SWOT analysis with the stakeholders, and in terms of strengths, we heard quite a bit about the small-town atmosphere, the people again, the parks and the green spaces, arts and cultural amenities. In terms of weaknesses and liabilities, we like to call them liabilities. So deterioration of infrastructure, resistance to change, lack of opportunities for citizen engagement, lack of communication between the city and its residents, transportation, traffic congestion, failure to address sustainability issues such as sea level rise, again, going to what you had already said needs to be planned for. And then one that really popped up that I hadn't heard through the process was homelessness. So that was something that had come up a couple of times from those interviews. And then opportunities, obviously, improving the infrastructure, creating this strategic plan for future progress, dredging the waterways and canals, I heard over and over again, improving city services. And then the other piece that I thought was really interesting that almost everyone said was connecting all communities within the city. So again, that connection between the sponge docks and downtown and other areas of the city. And then threats, again, there's nothing here, I think, that really stands out. Most of this is stuff we cannot control, right? Such as a global pandemic, a natural disaster, an unfunded mandate from the state. But one of the things that did come up over and over that was perceived as a threat was the lack of affordable housing. And so we probably need to dive into that data a little bit more to understand if it's affordable or attainable housing, right? So affordable is the low income, where the attainable would be those people who may not be, but there are teachers, and there are firefighters, and there are police officers, and so is it outpriced for them, for them to live? So that's something that stood out to us in the data. We just weren't sure and need clarification on that. Okay. Then we had a lovely citizen engagement session. We had a lot of great citizens who were on there. It was on August 26th, and I do believe this report is already on Connect Tarpon, so you can see its entirety. We did a couple of different things with them. So again, we took the core values, those guiding principles that you came up with, that we vetted with the senior leadership, and we asked them, what do you think is needed? Which of these are the top ones to effectively engage in this process? The process we're doing for strategic planning. And not to anyone's surprise, Citizens First is obviously at the top. But then the interesting piece is the net But then the interesting piece is the next, if you look at the data next, financial responsibility and quality of life tied, followed by communication. So again, remember, we were specifically talking about the strategic planning process here. And so, we definitely have taken that to heart, but I think it is something that you definitely, as we move forward through the process, need to recognize. And then we talked a little bit about, what were some really good engagement, best practices that citizens, the city, that there could be this kind of interaction, right? How could we like, improve on that? And what are, what are some ways to, for better community engagement and involvement? And so you can see coming together, right? So, they want that, that's the number one thing. And then the other three are really all this, I would say neck and neck, right? They're all equal. And so, being respectful, seeking to understand, and then, we really liked offering a solution. So again, and this went both ways, right? And so it is, if you're going to come speak to the council, we had this conversation, or, excuse me, the commission, if you're going to come speak to the commission, you also need to have a solution. If you have a problem, let's kind of come up with a solution. And so these are really good ways to engage on both sides. And then again, excuse me, I just wanted to share with you, we did take, and have them come up with, again, these kind of guiding principles that we started out with. And so as you can see, if you look here, proper engagement of the community, and then communication, or at the very, very top, followed by making Tarpon a community that is welcoming. And then, again, including citizens, being diverse, building trust, visionary leadership, and then obviously having outlining and making sure that there's long-term goals and objectives. So it was a really great session. Okay. We also conducted a resident survey. There were 316 completed surveys. That report will be on the Connect Tarpon by Friday. And so it is done, I'm just reviewing it one last time, but I did want to just share with you some data. So first of all, the survey was a web-based format. We asked a lot of questions, but we really focused on some specific areas. For instance, perceptions of the quality of life within Tarpon, communication methods, interactions with employees, and then future aspirations. And so here you can see, this is fantastic. 90% of the respondents see Tarpon as a good place to live. They are somewhat concerned by traffic congestion and access to public transportation. But 90% is fantastic, that they see Tarpon as a good place to live. Again, interestingly enough, look at the, the second bullet here. This goes right in line with what we've heard from you, as well as what we heard in the citizen engagement, as well as what we heard from the city leadership. Residents value the small-town atmosphere, unique history and culture, and extensive community amenities. There were some concerns over future developments. Residents are interested in improving the quality of life, but their big concern is making, how do you balance that or preserve the small-town, right? And so I think that is one of the data points that we saw. Also, interestingly enough, what also came out of this was, the entrance, the interest or preference for doing revitalization versus new development. So we did want to call that to your attention. Just a couple more points here. Now this is a really interesting point, which we'll probably have to sit down with your communications. This is always a challenge for every city, town, municipality that we work with. So your citizens rely heavily on local media and Facebook to stay informed. However, they prefer to be contacted by email and text. So it's very interesting, and I would like to just commend where's Renee and the Communications Department. I really have to say, they, I will tell you, we do these all over, and Connect Tarpon is by far the best vehicle we have seen used throughout the state in terms of communication with residents. There is so much information there, but it is so easy to digest, to read, to get, and it's very transparent, so I, I commend all of you for that. Okay, and then just lastly on this really quickly, so, every, this was an interesting one. So, people who had contacted the city, whether it was an official or a department, they had mixed opinions. So many of them felt that contacting the city is, is easy, and, and all the employees are very courteous, very professional, but there was some concern on timeliness. So, that could mean many things. That could be, but we need to dive deeper into the data, but I would say the majority of people were very, very happy with connecting with the city. Okay, really quickly, just want to share a couple more things and then I'll stop. So the employee survey, we also conducted that. We had 250 responses. It was fielded between November 15th and November 30th. Employees have a very positive perspective of the city. I mean, 93% agree that it's a good place to work, and 94% agree that they like their jobs. I mean, that's fantastic. Those, like, you don't see those numbers, like, really, great job. Also, when you look at the 84% say that it's a positive work environment, again, very high, that they, that they would also encourage others to work for the city, 89% say that they would encourage a colleague to work for the city. And then in terms of, this one really was just, again, commendable, I think, to leadership in the sense that 98% recognize that what they're doing is important to the mission of the city. You usually don't see that, right? You don't see that high level of people understanding that they are valued, and the work that they're doing is critical. And then, again, going to the values piece of this, I think the other really interesting thing is, again, this is extremely high for this type of survey, that your employees, their individual values are consistent with the values of the city. And again, kudos to all of you for that. And then here's just a couple more points. I don't really need to go through all these, there will be a full report. That report may not be by Friday, since it just closed on the 30th. Dr. Neely is working, working very hard to get it done. We do have some highlights, but that may be after the first of the year. However, this PowerPoint can be placed up there. So, let's see, what else could we say? Again, there's positive perceptions from employees of the communities they serve. They rate, a majority rate organizational communications positively. 86% say that employees communicate effectively with one another. 72% say that communication is effective between different departments. And then 69% say that decisions are communicated clearly to employees. So you're probably going, oh my gosh, it's only 69%. No, that's really good. So, I mean, you don't normally see those numbers. Sure, is there room for improvement? Always. But when you look at the other numbers up there, you can make some correlation and, and see the, see the, the positive work environment. And then 85% or more, it's roughly around there, rate their immediate supervisor positively in all the categories that we ask them. So again, okay. Last but not least, first of all, you have a lovely staff. We had the employee focus group on December 10th, and really, everyone worked very hard, they were very dedicated, there was a lot of interaction, there was a lot of discussion. I don't think anyone was afraid to say anything, and I felt like we really got some great, really good data out, out of that, out of that workshop. So just really quickly, we did a SWOT with them and we did a couple of other things. Again, this will also, this one will be up on Connect Tarpon, if it's not already there by Friday. So I just wanted to share with you, again, remember all the things I've talked about, we keep kind of going to certain things. So again, their strengths were sense of pride in the work performed. This was something interesting to me. They really felt that the strength of Tarpon was that the city already has an identity. So that was a very interesting from the, from the, from the employees. And then they really felt that because they were in a smaller geographic or demographic area, that they could be more efficient and offer better customer service. So some of the weaknesses that they felt that could be improved upon, but, you know, definitely could be challenges, was competitive pay. A lot of them said, boy, wouldn't it be great to win the lottery and have all this budget for what we want to do, right? So we get that, every, everyone has that. Aging infrastructure, again, you heard that over and over already throughout this presentation. Sometimes there can be a lengthy process for development, and, and they express that as a challenge for the residents, for the citizens, for the community, for anybody, you know, anybody working with the city, that sometimes that can be a challenge. And then one of the interesting things was, they were really pleased that this process was happening, but what we heard was, sometimes the forward-thinking can be stifled a little bit, and, and that may be a challenge, as we kind of move through it. And then, let's see, you'll see a couple of opportunities up here, again, talking about pay scale in light of the current economy. I, I think really what we heard here under opportunities was, maybe consider different incentives or ways to reward employees, even if, you know, yes, pay is one way, but a lot of the employees are very dedicated, and, again, as you saw from the survey, their values are in line and they love working here. And so I think that's what we were hearing more, is really the incentive piece, basically showing appreciation for, for what they've done. And then lastly, and this is something that hasn't come up, but absolutely you see in employee surveys, when you begin to think about challenges and threats, and that's cybersecurity, right? They were really concerned about something happening. And then misinformation spreading through social media, they were very concerned about that. And then lack of employee retention, so. So as you can see, these are very high-level, these are not set in stone, these are just, as we began working through this process and all the data we've collected to date, these are kind of what's rising to the top. This is in, by no means is the language staying this way, or anything. I just want to kind of show you what's bubbling up. And so you can see culture, heritage, and preservation, community engagement and involvement, growth and development, infrastructure, visionary leadership and management, natural resources and quality of life. So these are what is starting to emerge throughout the process. So what are we going to do with this, right? That's, that's really the question. So here are the next steps. So now that we have all of this data, we will have a community focus group, which will be held on January 20th from 6:00 to 9:00. There is a save the date already on Connect Tarpon. The link for registration will be live on Friday as well. There will be a virtual option. It will be held at SPC Tarpon, but there will be a virtual option. So we'll have that on January 20th. And then on February 12th, we will have another one, and that one is on a Saturday, same location, with a virtual option. However, that is from 9:00 AM until noon. And so the reason that we did one in the evening and one on a Saturday was so that those people who maybe work, or who have children, we're trying to make it as flexible as we could, so we can hopefully get better community participation in, in the forums. And then, I will circle back with you on March 3rd. And at that, we will, I will more than likely have Dr. Neely, Dr. Daly, and SPC with me, and we'll be able to, that is an hour and a half, that is actual workshop, and we will really go through the data in a lot more depth with you at that workshop. Okay? Questions? I know I gave you a lot of information.
Mrs. Chris, thank you for the informative report. We are now going to the public comments, and if you please stand by, we'll come back to you.
Sure.
Thank you. We go to the public comments on this item. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium. Anyone has any comments?
David Ballard, Gettys Jr., I live on 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Most of these issues that were presented to the board before you tonight, could have been issues that have easily been prevented, such as infrastructure, which uniformly coast-to-coast has been not maintained adequately. St. Petersburg is a prime national disgrace for that example. Roadways and so forth, allowing the conundrum of overdevelopment, which has taken place, absent preparing the roads for the traffic that's reasonably foreseen, is a disgrace of the state. And again, the water issues. Waters, I understand, have no boundaries, and this is the most vital foundation of our society, which seems to be of very little concern to the presentation before you tonight, as well as we need jobs for the residents. The civilian population is being suppositioned.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. Something I heard that really has stuck out, and that we have an employee lack of retention. The results and numbers that I was listening to you say were amazing. So that's got to be a very tremendous concern, to have a lack of retention when you have numbers like that. They just, they, they just don't make sense. So, I'm not looking for you to give me an answer to that, but it's something that we as a commission here have to really look into, because that's our most valuable asset. That's what you put your time and effort in. It's, it's training people, so you don't want to have any situation where you're turning over employees. Okay? Thank you.
Peter Lachas, 5014 Ashland Avenue. Definitely was a lot of stuff in there, Mr. Chris. We thank you for your time and sharing that, and, and you mentioned preservation. Sometimes in this town, people only think of preservation of, as buildings. That's what people can look at and say, oh, this was built in 1902, that was the Smurlus' Bakery, or the historic sites in those regards. But, there's another type of preservation. It's a preservation of your natural community. You'll be seeing something, we were at the P&amp;Z meeting last night, corner of Melon and Jasmine, five beautiful acres. They want to put in 18 units, pretty much going to end up clear-cutting it. Could be a great spot to add into the city's portfolio of properties. It's right just north of Rose Cemetery. It's a, butts the sports complex, so you've got options of using maybe some of it as an extension of the sports complex on the west side and the north side, and maybe allow the city to eventually take and help Rose Cemetery and the city to eventually take and help Rose Cemetery and expand it, and help develop it and make it as beautiful as the one we've done and across the street at the corner of Jasmine and Tarpon Avenue. So there's more preservation besides just buildings. Also, cultural preservation. This project, I asked last night that they do an underground survey for any potential grave sites that may be in this property. They're going to do a Class 1 survey, which is like archaeological, they go, they look around, they do some borings. This site demands more looking at. But the point I'm trying to make is, as we grow, these little pockets of five acres, or seven acres, or 10 acres are disappearing. And they're the ones that create the natural beauty that people like to live within. So there's more preservation than just preserving an old building, or a library, or structures. Thank you.
No, we'll wait for that.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Do we have any other public comments? We're here now, and the public part of the meeting is now. Mrs. Quest, I'd like to ask you a few questions on that report that you gave us, which was so informative, and you had such a good response from the surveys that you got. How many residents did you, did they participate in that survey? Do you know?
We had 316 responses to the resident survey.
Okay. Did you know if there were any business people, or they were just residents?
I have not looked at the raw data set. When we meet with you, it's in the report that I'm looking at right now, so I do not know, but he does have it broken down demographically. Let me just, real quick, let's see. We asked how long people had lived in Tarpon, what type of home did they live in, and then if they own or rent. So I am not sure that we got if they were business owners, because the characteristics, the respondent characteristics that we asked were those five questions.
The other question that I have is, we have many, many people, they use in Tarpon Springs address, because they have, we have the same post office, but actually they live in a incorporate area. I wonder if some of those people, they are not actually residents of Tarpon Springs. Have you asked that question?
Yes, so the very first question was, how long have you lived in Tarpon Springs? What type of home do you live in? And then if they own or rent. So we specifically asked them right up front if they live in Tarpon Springs. So the only way to really get to, remember, we did this survey as a web-based format. We also do similar surveys, we're currently doing one with the town of Longboat Key, down in Sarasota, Manatee. And the only way to really get, because they have a large population same way, the only way to get to what you're doing is to actually do direct mailers, and it's very cost prohibitive to do direct mailers, because you're basically mailing to people who have a PO box that may not live. I mean, they own property, but they don't live in the city, so.
Lot of the results that you got from the survey, it kind of looked like the same ones that we actually come up with during the workshop that we had, but there were a couple of things were different, is to connect the Sponge Docks with the downtown. It's something I always wanted. Did they tell you, or it was part of the survey, how do they expect that to happen? Is it transportation, or?
No, and so here's what I would say to that. So I left these up there on purpose, because as we get into Community Forum 1 and Community Forum 2, we will actually be diving into some of that. So we will, when we talk about growth and development, and we will, we will break the community members into groups, and we will have very, very long discussions around, okay, if you were to plan, should it be a priority connecting downtown to the Sponge Docks? That's what we heard, but should it be? And if it should be, how should we do it? So we're going to ask the community that during the community forums.
Okay. They also talked about affordable housing, which is actually a national crisis right now. Did you get any specific data on that?
Again, I would need to go back through and look and ask Dr. Neely. I have, I don't, all, all, all the responses that I have seen so far was that there was just an issue, not in terms of the details. Again, that's why I made the comment of, is it really affordable, or is it attainable? There's really a big difference. And so I think, I will have him look at the raw data and see if we can't get anything out of the raw data, but again, that's something that we will need to talk to the community about at the forums, is, is it, again, answering that question?
Right, because what's affordable to one person is not the same affordable to the next person, so probably, we have an explanation what that is. I am very glad to see that nine out of 10 people, they say Tarpon Springs is a good place to live, and also 93% of the employees, they're happy with their job. But also, at the same time, you says that we need to retain the employees. I can tell you that things have got so much better, of course, by having 93% satisfaction, seems like you have a conflicting information there. But I remember when I was first elected as the commissioner back in 2007, Tarpon Springs could not keep any employees. And I'm looking back in there, at that time Commissioner Robin Singer, she was sitting next to me at the time, we worked on the same, same problem. What happened then was, we found different ways to increase their benefits, to increase their wages, and to be compatible with the other cities. And talking to the other people, and I'm not making excuses, we always have to get better.
Right.
You know.
Could I clarify for just a second?
Of course.
Sure. Okay, so I just want to clarify on the retention issue, because I think what we were hearing is, if you would have asked that same question two years ago, you wouldn't have gotten the same answer. And so what we heard a lot was that, because of the global pandemic, because of the rise in inflation, people were concerned that retention was going to be an issue. And so, again, going back to the comment I made about incentives for employees, not necessarily pay, so I just want to be clear that it's, again, I think that there are societal issues that we saw, and employees said at the forum, that I think it's more of a fear that people, you know, are concerned, concerned about that.
And it's very clear, the message we got on infrastructure, because one of my concern, everybody else here on the board is, the ceiling level rise, so that's something that we are working on that. My last question is, you going to have three more forums?
Well, we have, we have two forums for the community, they're each three hours. One is January 20th from 6:00 to 9:00, and one is February 12th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then, once we get all that and present to you, then there's some other steps in the process before we start and sit down with leadership, meaning you all.
Yes. My question is, is these sessions going to be videotaped, so everybody can watch it?
Well, it is going to be virtual, and so SPC Collaborative Labs will be recording it, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. My last question, I just realized that we have one. Do you ask in the age groups? Are you allowed to do that?
We did not put age in there.
The reason I'm saying that is because we have many seniors here.
Yes.
We have a very large senior population, and not very many people are capable using a laptop, or any, any smart device.
We had some paper.
So they, we need to find a way to get their information as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm sorry, I did, we had paper surveys if needed, but I don't think we had anybody. So that was an option, that if they needed it, they could have done it, but I don't know that we had anyone do the paper surveys. And so I just share that with you, because we thought of that as an issue as well.
Yeah, because we have a very large senior population here, and we need to get their, their opinion as well.
Mm-hmm.
Again, thank you.
Absolutely.
My fellow commissioners, we have to stop the session, and because at 7:30 we have to start the other public hearing, so we'll come back to that one, with the commission comments. Okay?
I mean, do you want to try to finish the questions now? Because I don't want to make her wait all night, just for three more questions.
We don't want her to wait. Continue.
100%.
All right. Yeah. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I've got no questions.
Good too. You mean, Commissioner?
Yeah, my only question was just, how was that resident survey broadcast? I didn't quite catch that part. Was that, was that something that was just done at a workshop, or was that something you guys went like door-to-door, handed out?
Oh, no, they, I'm going to let Renee, because they did it, they did a lot of work.
Okay.
We pushed it out through, through Facebook multiple times, through the city's Facebook page, it's been on Connect Tarpon. We also had, any email groups that we had, we pushed it out, so I think we even had some, just very, some basic press releases as well that went out to media and stuff, so that was the methods that we used.
Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Commissioner?
Pick you back on that. It wasn't, and they didn't do it just one time, I want to make that clear. We were watching the numbers and working with Dr. Neely, and making sure that we got to a number that he was comfortable with, and I think even a couple of weeks ago, we did one last big push to get a few more in.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tikursen comments?
Yes. Ms. Chris, on your slide, under Current Successes, I don't know if this is going to telegraph through your reports, but under Current Success, you've got 80 million in reserves, I think that's 8 million.
Oh, okay, it might have just been a typo.
It might be a typo, but it may be telegraphing through. On the citizen engagement, the top core values on communications was listed as fourth, but under the guiding principles, it was listed as first. How, I mean, it seems to me that's a little odd.
Okay, so wait, I'm sorry, go back to which slide, I was taking a note on that.
The citizen engagement, on your top core values, you list communications, or at least, the results showed communications as fourth, and then the guiding principles later, under citizen engagement, was listed as first.
Right, it happens. So what could happen is, one is what they value, and one is how they want to behave. I mean, that's as simple as it gets.
They value the core value as fourth, and the guiding principle would be?
So what, what they're saying is, the core, in terms of how they want to effectively engage in the process, it came down as fourth. That, that, that's how, you know, they want to see citizens first, financial responsibility, quality of life, that's, that's in terms of effectively engaging with one another. In terms of, I would say, guiding principles are non-negotiable, right? It's something that has to be there, that everyone agrees upon, and they're saying that, yes, that was number one.
Okay, talk a little more later about that.
Yeah, I'm happy to sit down with you and go through it.
Yeah, and then, number three, on revitalization over development, at some point, there's ought to be some kind of a discussion on terminology. I know revitalization over development, I think of things as place-based versus asset-based, that sort of thing, and I'm not sure, there's got to be some reconciliation, so that it's understood by everybody what is meant by that. So I think some consideration should be given to that, and I'll have a question on that in a second. On employee, just, just out of curiosity, you said that the employees felt very good that their jobs were contributing to the mission of the city. And the one thing that, it's just a question, what, what did you, how did you share, or what did the employee share with you was the mission of the city? I mean, I, you know, we've got, we're developing a vision, some, some principles here, but how does an employee say that they feel that their job is, first of all, we've got great employees, I don't even question that, but it was just the way you presented this, is that they feel, 98% feel good that they, their job contributes to the mission of the city? And what was the mission of the city?
So I think, as an employee, in their mind, the mission is those kind of core services that they provide, those city services that they provide to residents. And so that's how, it was within that context.
The city services.
Correct.
In other words, yeah, okay, yeah. We can talk about that a little more in-depth, as far as making it a little more meaningful, I think, and kind of draw it.
Absolutely. And again, when all the reports are up, I would strongly encourage you to look at them, and then come prepared when we meet face-to-face, and we can go through the data a lot more in-depthly.
And on slide five, which I think is what you've got up there, on the emerging, what's it called, emerging?
Strategic themes.
Strategic themes. You've got growth and development, but earlier, it seemed that the residents were more preferable towards redevelopment than growth. Is that, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but is this a catch-all?
No, that's what I was saying, these are just what we saw coming to the top. So for example, growth and development, there may be a redevelopment goal under that, or you may change it.
I follow.
It may be growth and redevelopment. All we're saying is, this is what we're seeing out of all the data that we've collected, Dr. Neely, Dr. Daly, myself and SPC, this is what we kind of came up with, that's rising to the top.
Those are topics?
Yeah, correct, yes.
And then lastly, in your presentation, you gave 613 responses.
No, 316.
Well, you said 613 or 617 at one time, maybe I misunderstood that?
So for the resident survey, there were 316 responses, for the employee survey, there was 215.
So, okay. All right, I'll go back and re-listen to the meeting.
Okay.
There's some, it threw me.
I hope I didn't misspeak, but that, those are the correct numbers, 316 and 215.
No, I, that's why I caught it, I thought you had said 600 at some point, and I said, man, it's great for citizen responses, because we've had some trouble in other areas getting that type of responses, in terms of priorities. Mayor, thank you, that's all, excellent presentation, I'm looking forward to you continuing and providing us great results, and quite frankly, helping us understand the city better ourselves, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please, thank you. I'm going to request to have a motion, so we can accept this presentation, so we move forward, because we don't have consensus anymore.
Motion to accept the presentation.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
May I ask this?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now going to the public hearing, which is item number 12, Resolution 2021-67, approval application for grant funding through the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Sid Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Yes, Mayor, Resolution 2021-67, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida authorizing the filing of an application for grant funds through the National Trust for Historic Preservation, telling the full history preservation fund, stating the assurance of the City of Tarpon Springs to complete the project, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2021-67 by title only.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners Renee Vincent. I do want to introduce Caroline Lanford, she's our new principal planner for, for the city, and one of the first things that she's jumped on since she's been here is to put together this grant application to the National Trust for Historic Preservation, specifically, this is funding that will, if we receive it, that will fund a full cultural and historic resources survey of the Union Academy neighborhood, and it'll lay the foundation for several things to come. First and foremost would be, you know, establishment of some sort of a cultural preservation district or historic preservation district, but really also really, you know, recognizing and recording the history here, so we're excited to go forward with this. Caroline's here to answer any specific questions about the grant, but we're looking forward to getting this submitted, it is due tomorrow, so thank you for getting this in under the wire for us tonight, thanks.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comments, do we have any public comments on this item? If you do, please come forward to the podium.
David Ballard, Gettys Jr., 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor, recognizing historic areas, wouldn't also the property along the river's edge that's being proposed for development, wouldn't that also fall in to the category of possible historic preservation?
Sir, this item is on the agenda, so we're going to be talking about that later.
As relating to historic preservation, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments on this, on this item? I hear none. The Chair will detain the motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Are there any Commission comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, could, could you just, I didn't see it on here, just, do we know exactly what the timeline's going to be on this, as far as the application process and when it might be completed?
Yes, we should hear whether or not we receive the grant by March, and then we would be completing the project by March 2023.
Okay, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to say thank you to you all and welcome to the City of Tarpon Springs. And we're happy you're here.
I'm so happy to be here, thank you.
And thank you for going after these grants in your department. It's a great resource and I'm looking forward to hopefully receiving this one. Thank you.
Commissioner Tchikirisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited about this grant. I mean, I think it's, it's really needed and I think it's going to move us towards creating a third community within Tar, I mean, recognized community within Tarpon Springs, formerly recognized community in Tarpon Springs. I'm appreciative of that. Is there something more that you can say about the fifty thousand? I recognize what that's going to be, but then there's a nexus to the twenty-five thousand that is for the finding of necessity for the Community Redevelopment Agency for the Union Academy neighborhood. And I, I think that's fairly new for everybody that's sitting out here. And I'm, I'm excited about that as well, but I think it might be good to say a few more words about that.
Sure. So, I mean, the research that we'll be doing, if we get the grant, will certainly feed into this. But the, as part of the budget last year, the board did approve twenty-five thousand if necessary, you know, if we need to use a consultant to go out, to perform a finding of necessity for the Union Academy area, and maybe even a little bit larger than that. And that's the first step in establishing a community redevelopment area. And the eventual goal, that would be a tax increment financing district, just like we have for the downtown, where that, those, that incremental taxes as they go up, that's all that, that increment goes into a fund that goes, that goes directly back into the neighborhood. So there's a, you know, a lot of things that we can do with that. And so this is just, these, these things kind of coupled together. And so we're, you know, we're excited about, about that. Caroline's probably going to be taking the lead on getting the finding of necessity done. We've already reached out to the county to kind of establish a boundary and a framework and, and, you know, make sure that we're on the same page with the county, because they ultimately, we want their TIF dollars to participate. So we're working on that.
The timing of both, completing this, the grant, the fifty thousand dollar, and then also the finding of necessity?
We have not actually started, we're just now beginning on the finding of necessity. You know, we would certainly like to, you know, to get that done, you know, by, you know, I would say probably by mid-year. It's a lot of data gathering, so, and we want to make sure we get it right before we go to the county and present it. So I'm hoping by mid-year, you know, hopefully the latest in the fall to, to have the finding of necessity completed.
And just for the, for everybody, this CRA is established by the county, not the city.
It's, we establishment, but we establish it, but the county has to approve it. So in order to get the county TIF funding, they have, they have to bless it, if you will. And so we, we gotta, we gotta dot the i's, cross the t's, and follow all the steps. It's a lengthy process to establish a CRA. It's not something that's going to happen in, you know, in six months or a year. You're probably talking, you know, eighteen months to two years, really, to get to the end point. Just, just at the big picture, finding of necessity is the first step. You go to the county and you ask for a delegation of authority to plan for the area. You actually do a plan, a redevelopment plan for the area. And then you get that approved and you get, hopefully get approval to establish the tax increment financing district. So all that takes quite a bit of time, so people need to be patient.
No, no, I understand that, what, two or three years?
I would, yes, realistically, it would be.
And, and I'm kind of drawing on a couple of sound bites. City Manager and I have already discussed this a bit. The county identified how many potential areas for new CRAs? And we happen to be one of them, which I think, it's, it's something that isn't just going to happen because we want it to happen.
Correct. So back in 2012, the county produced an Economic Impacts of Poverty Report. And it identified five geographic areas in the county where, that they recognized as these are the areas of most, of most need. And so they've now kind of funneled their policies of how they're evaluating community redevelopment areas and TIF districts kind of through that lens. And so, yes, with the Union Academy area was identified as one of those areas, identified areas of need. So the county, you know, from a policy perspective, they're definitely, you know, they, their policy supports where we're going.
Good. Okay. Thank, thank you very much and welcome to the city.
Ms. Vincent?
Yes.
I just want to ask you a question. What's our chances to, to get this grant? Do you know?
I'll have to defer that one on with Caroline, has it?
It's a fairly competitive grant, but they expect about to award sixty to eighty. And I did some preliminary discussions with some staff at the National Endowment for Historic Preservation. And they were very excited about the unique opportunities that Tarpon Springs has. And it's a very, they, they recognized how unique our community is.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, the legislators had discussions about not allowing a CRA areas anymore? Do you remember that? Or there was a discussion to, to stop in certain year? What's the story about that?
To my knowledge, their, the CRAs are still alive and well. I can, I would have to go back and see maybe what's cooking in the legislative session now, but to my knowledge, there's, there's no, there's no restriction on establishing a new CRA.
Okay, good. And again, like Commissioner Vaticiotis has answered the, asked the question, it will be up to the county to approve it. If we don't get an approval, can we have as a historical area?
Oh, absolutely. These two things are not mutually, I mean, they're, we can definitely carry on with historic preservation, you know, effort and cultural resource preservation effort regardless of what happens with the CRA effort.
Yeah. Well, everybody thinks about the CRA as for the business area, but it can be residential as well?
Absolutely. And affordable housing is, is a recognized, you know, area within community development area focus. And, and that is actually a policy directive, if you will, from the county perspective of, they have, they have now identified priority investments for the county TIF dollars. So if they participate, affordable housing is one of them. And so, you know, again, I think, you know, that, that's, but yes, residential is definitely, residential CRAs are not hugely common, but it's, it's definitely doable. And we'd like to look at some, you know, economic benefit as well for the area, you know, and, you know, hoping to, you know, reestablish, you know, black-owned businesses and, and, you know, how do we, you know, how do we energize that community? So it's, it's not just residential.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Jacobs, do we have a motion on the floor?
We do.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number thirteen, the amended resolution 2021-63, calling for election in ballot language. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution 2021-63.
Yes, Mayor. This is Resolution 2021-63, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, calling for the municipal general election to be held on March fifteenth, 2022, for the purpose of electing a mayor to serve a term of three years, two commissioners to serve a term of three years each, and one commissioner to serve an, a, a unexpired term of one year, providing for establishment of the ballot title for said election, providing for notice to the supervisor elections, and providing for the effective date hereof. That was a reading of Resolution number 2021-63 by title only.
Thank you. Ms. City Clerk, do you want to comment on that resolution?
It's pretty straightforward. There's, everyone received the amended. We had a candidate withdraw, so the corrected copy is in the backup and what's being, for approval.
Thank you. We are now going to the public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item? Please come to the podium. Huh? No, it's over. We are now talking, we're discussing number thirteen. Do we have any comments on this item? I hear none. The Chair will detain the motion.
So moved. Second.
Any Commission comments? You're not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes, thank you. Number fourteen is the next item, Resolution 2021-66, candidate forum. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, this is Resolution 2021-66, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs to co-sponsor a candidate forum for candidates for, for city office, to be held on Tuesday, January eighteenth, 2022, and providing for rules and procedures for the conduct, conduct of the candidate forum, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2021-66 by title only.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Are there any Commission comments? You're not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes, thank you. Well, we finished with the public hearing section. We're going back into, we're left off, which is item number six. Item number six is the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee Update. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Back in November, we, I came to the, to you and discussed the, the overall public engagement plan for the comprehensive plan update. And there was a question there about forming the steering committee and the composition of that committee. At that meeting, we did, or you did provide direction to us to, as a starting point, utilize the stakeholder group that was identified for the strategic plan. So since that meeting, we have reached out to, we still have one or two people that we haven't made contact with, but we have reached out to the vast majority of both the primary and the alternate candidates that were identified. And you do, in addition to the, to the folks that have already, we have an indication of yes on the, we have three additional yeses that can be added to that list. So we have at least twenty-three people. We did exclude, so if someone was on this list, it was also an appointed board that's going to be serving in that capacity. We didn't ask them to participate, also participate in the steering committee. So we did have a little bit of overlap there. So we will continue to, to, to reach out to the people that we have not yet heard back from, and we may reach out to you for maybe an alternate contact phone number if we need to, on the couple that we haven't made contact with. But this is a sufficiently large group. We'll continue to reach out. We'll, it's no problem to, if everybody else wants to participate that we haven't heard from, we'll simply add them in and we'll continue to, to try to contact them. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Vincent, can you take a few minutes and tell us the process that you're going to use?
So the, we have a, the overall public engagement plan will involve three, we call them series of policy workshops. So there'll be like an introductory, an intermediate, and then a, you know, final set of workshops. There will be community, overall community engagement forums that you can attend an actual workshop. We will have an online participation for each one of those series of workshops. We will have a session with our appointed boards as well. And then at two points along the way, the steering committee group will form as, as a, as a kind of a, most in the upfront process for the first set of policy workshops. And then we're on the back end, that's kind of that sounding board to review what's, what's been done. So there, you know, there, when we explained it to the, to the committee members or the steering committee, you know, we asked them to be, you know, able to at least engage in two, three-hour workshops as part of the process. So, so there'll be, we'll be putting out some additional guidance very soon. We're meeting with a consultant group this week to kind of tidy this up and try to, you know, at least get that first series of engagement processes scheduled. We're looking hopefully at the, the, the week of, that begins with January thirty-first, so the first week of February, to, to kick off the, the real true engagement for this. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Any other Commission comments?
I?
You do?
Oh, I've got my light on there.
I thought that was there.
I've just, what is the motion? I know it was motion to approve, but what is the motion? This is an update.
We do not have consensus anymore, so the only thing we do is motion.
There is no motion. Okay, so.
No, no, no.
I wasn't looking for, I was just giving you an update tonight. I didn't know if I, I don't feel like I need a motion, but.
As you know, Commissioner Vaticiotis, during the rules and regulations, we do not have consensus anymore. We just have motion. So that's what we.
But what's the motion for, Mayor?
My, my understanding is that it's to accept the steering committee, the people that said yes for confirmed interest.
But Mrs. Vincent said she's still calling people to add them to the list.
Yeah, and they, and they have a blank one on confirmed interest. So you still have the list of names on there.
So I guess what I, as long, as long as you have no problems with me adding to the, you know, to this, as people contact me and they're on the list, they can participate. That's what we're looking for.
Would, would you mind amending your motion to reflect that?
It wasn't my motion, but, yeah, I think that was understood.
Okay. So as you go forward, I, I know I asked about Mr. Dunkel and Ms. Fatidis, and they're very important, especially with the, the public schools element that we're going to continue with, with Ms. Fatidis, since there was nobody else on this list from the public schools. So the idea is to continue trying to get in touch with them?
Absolutely.
And then we'll just add them to the list. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments? And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Thank you. Yes. We go to number seven, which is the approval of the City Clerk Office Final Design. And we go to staff report.
Meeting Mayor Commissioners, I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, we're presenting the ninety percent design, essentially the final design, for the new Clerk's Office building. Irene and Michelle have worked closely with me and the architect to come up with a design that we think is a pretty good one. Chris Rollins is our lead architect from Long and Associates, and he's going to give you a brief presentation highlighting some of the design elements and show you some interior and exterior renderings. At the end of the presentation, we'll be asking the board for approval to put the project out to bid for construction. And finally, hard copies of the site plan and landscape plan have been provided to you on the dais before the meeting. Chris has a slide for them as well, if needed for discussion. So, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Again, as Bob mentioned, I'm Chris Rollins, Architect with Long and Associates, Architects and Engineers. And just to bring you up to speed, last we met, we were at the thirty percent design And just to bring you up to speed, last we met, we were at the thirty percent design construction, and, uh, that was about a year ago. So we confirmed that new construction would be best instead of renovating the existing clerk's office. And a couple of those factors would be enhanced security, universal accessibility, improved working conditions, space to accommodate employees comfortably, and of course, updated systems and finishes. We also verified that ground level future expansion, if future expansion was to be the case, uh, would be best instead of future second floor expansion. A couple of those items is that for future second floor expansion, you'd have to have the ability to have an elevator, a couple of different stair towers, and we figured that moving west would be better for the ground level expansion. We also confirmed the site plan and floor plan confirmation. So with the site plan, we agreed that to optimize the most amount of spaces to try, to try and get back to sixty-three instead of fifty-nine would be the best way forward. And through that process, from our thirty percent to our ninety percent design, we also keep in mind with lead conscious design at the forefront of our minds, minimize glazing exposure, proper wall roof and glazing insulation, energy modeling all along the way, HVAC system sizing, daylight harvesting, indoor air quality, LED lighting, increasing impervious, impervious surfaces, and of course, applying for and being certified for the water, Florida, Florida Water Star certification. And also in our design, we kept a flat roof, a parapitted roof for solar panel ready. So essentially during the bidding process, what we'll provide is solar panel design, so that the contractor can bid and provide an, at alternate cost, so that the project and the budget can accept it, we can have solar panels on the roof. So with that, this is a shot of the floor plan, showing the north to south access. The north would be the lobby for the public personnel to enter, the south would be the drive-through. And how the floor plan lays out in light blue and light white are some of the restrooms and support spaces, and there in dark blue are the two dedicated offices on the northwest, and their support spaces, workspace, break room, storage room, small conference, as well as a safe room. And there in the middle is the open office concept floor plan. Again, the floor plan that we've worked extensively with the stakeholders and the user group to get to where we're at today. And take you on the outside, instead of going through some of the nitty-gritty details of the project, show you some of the nice renderings. This would be the north end, looking at the front facade of the building. We really tried to bring in some of the elements that are in this existing building now, with the, not only the brick, but the stone coping. And this will be a westerly shot on Ring Avenue, looking at the west facade of the new office, city clerk and collector. And as we move from thirty percent to sixty percent into ninety percent drawings, we really tried to get more technical. Really worked with the user group to come up with some of the finishes, to come up with some of the materials, to really get down to this last leg of the project, to where we can get something that's not only inviting for the public, but also something that's very welcoming and a great space to work in every single day. This would be the lobby entrance space. As you walk in, you'd be greeted by the transaction counter. On the left, there's two restrooms, and one cool aspect to this is that, I know it's kind of dark, but looking in the back there, that's the city, um, city clerk's office right now, they have a safe. So we've taken that door and we tried to implement it and bring into the new project something that's, you know, a name, name-keeper, a keepsake that you can walk in and kind of remember the old building and see some of the history in the past. And the next, there's some interior shots, so this is looking into that open office space. Really quite different than what's, what's out there right now. We're really excited about it, we think it's not only going to serve the public very well, but also serve the staff too. And this would be a shot on the outside, we'd be on the south looking back at the building. We tried to maximize the queuing as much as possible, we're estimating three, maybe four cars can get at the queuing drive-through window, but we made it so it's double, double wide, so if it is filled up, a car could get around, it could park, and somebody could come inside. And this would be looking where the existing city clerk's office is right now. It would be taken down, it'd be removed, but this would be the parking at the north of it. What you can't see here, and try to shoot a laser, is that we relocated two EV parking spaces, so we're trying to take them and not just get rid of them, but also reuse them in this new concept. This would be a ground level view, looking back to the north facade of the building. Again, taking a lot of elements out of this existing building right now that we're in, and really making it so it's a younger sibling of this building. Again, with the brick, again with the coping and how it steps up there at the front facade. We think it's really going to blend in well, think it's going to be a great project. And with that, I'll just take you through a couple more documents showing the floor plan layout that we've worked, again, with Irene and Michelle on, as well as the overall site plan, showing the new parking in the north, new parking on the south, the building right there in the middle of it, that was that western expansion possibility, uh, for the future. And overall, we've actually given back the amount of impervious space, so we've been able to give back about twenty-five hundred impervious, uh, square feet, which we think is a great benefit. And this would just be the last slide of the landscape plan, showing how we're trying to, again, use that impervious space and the trees that we do take down here at the south for the existing parking lot, we're going to put back either one for one or more with the amount of inches in caliber for the building, for the, uh, trees.
Thank you. We go into the public comments on this item. Do we have any comments? Please come forward.
Peter Lachas, five oh one four Ashland Avenue. About time. Get rid of those buckets, collecting the water. Fixing that roof how many times? But I heard something there potentially putting solar panels. We got to be doing this on all our buildings. All our buildings. It should be, no question in any design of any new buildings or retrofitting or renovating any buildings, that has to be included as a requirement. Because we need to do what we can in our own capacity to get off the grid and generate our own electricity. We're the sunshine state. We need to take advantage of that. And, uh, I know I get up here and speak a lot, so I didn't want to get up quite a bit, but I just want to thank Irene and Michelle. This election season is something we've never had to deal with before, four seats. And I know it's been a lot of work for them, and I just want to say we appreciate all the hard work and the efforts that you put into having Tarpin Springs be an example of good elections. And, uh, all the hard work Irene's put into setting up a forum, something that we established when we were back on there. So I want to thank Irene and Michelle and the rest of the city staff that's been involved in that, because, uh, you help, help keep our democracy flowing. Thank you, girls.
David Ballaguetis, Jr., eight oh two Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. Taking into consideration, um, again, uh, the water issues, do we have any dry beds or any retention areas for the collection of rainwater or the pumping of storm water, um, due to the, um, impervious, um, areas proposed with this development? And as well as, uh, based on the comprehensive plan, are there to be any underground, uh, or under the parking area, water vaults or water coffins of such where we pump the storm water, um, for, uh, um, you know, groundwater recharging, um, and with the development of this property relative to the comprehensive plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, public comments on this item? Here none. Chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Thank you. Now we're going to commission comments. Mr. Rollins, I got a couple of questions to ask you, if you please.
Sure.
You, we have a power charger right there on the, on the side of the building right now. That's going to be relocated. Are you going to have any more provisions for additional chargers?
Yes, actually, um, we plan to have some, there's at the south end here by the handicap parking, we plan to provide additional, uh, capabilities for EV charging stations there.
Okay. Thank you. In regards to, uh, safety and security, uh, have you done provisions to the employee, for the employees?
Well, we do plan to have security cameras, and they have their own secure access there in the back, they'll have key card access, so we plan that, you know, they'll have their ability to get in and out of the building, you know, maybe at late hours with key card access.
Okay. And that's going to be ADA compatible, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. I like the, uh, the looks of the building, kind of looks like the city hall, so I like that design. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of questions, appreciate the presentation, uh, I think the building looks great, uh, overall, uh, there's a lot of character to it. Just to go over, we talked about the solar panels, so it's designed as part of the bid for solar panels to be bid on, for the commission to decide at that point if that's something that the commission wants to use the, the water and sewer fund and the funding source for the solar panels at that point?
Yeah, that's the point, it'll be an ad alternate, so you'll get the price, but you don't have to, you know, buy into that unless it can be afforded.
Okay, and that's a, that's a, a point, so it's going to go out to bid, am I understanding that, Bob, after it's just approved tonight, it's going to go out to bid, and then it's going to come back for the commission, and at that point, we can make a decision, yea or nay?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And there is also initiative too, to look at solar panels for all the buildings, uh, or a lot of, all of our large buildings in the city of Tarpin Springs, so I do appreciate staff's work on that as well, too. I've got a question for you on slide eight and then slide eleven, I just want to make sure I understand the goal for what the inside's going to be. So if you go up two more, a couple more to slide eight, well, it's, it's number eight on the presentation, I'm sorry, yeah, that one aren't there.
Sure.
Is, so is this just like the concept of like the materials and not, because this shows like an open roof with no acoustic ceiling?
Right, it's merely just, um, some concept designs, some schemes that really got the thought process going for what the, uh, interior finishes and materiality would be.
Okay, so number eleven and twelve is going to be more what the, the lower height ceiling, it's not going to be completely open, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then on slide fourteen, uh, you have a covering that goes from basically the, the city clerk's office back over to city hall. Does that mean you can walk from the city clerk's office now all the way to city hall without getting wet?
That is right.
Okay, just want to make sure that wasn't just like a fancy design thing you put in there, it wasn't going to happen.
No, no, we, uh, we planned for that, and that's, uh, currently on what we plan to do.
I think, uh, the individual that spoke about stormwater, can someone address about, address that for me, please? On what the questions were?
Sure. Actually, in one of my earlier slides, I said we're going to increase the impervious, I meant increase the pervious area. So with that in mind, actually at both our, let me see if I can get to, both our north and south, uh, parking lots, we, our civil engineer has, you know, extensively planned for picking up all the rainwater, um, so if it doesn't go into either the storm drainage system, it'll go into the new pervious area. So it's going to be captured, and we don't need to, uh, plan for additional retention, because we haven't increased the amount of impervious area.
Okay, that's based on code, then?
Yeah, it's decreased to, uh, will be less runoff than there is now.
Okay.
To the point.
But with the pervious land, there's going to be potentially more area to direct it, am I understanding that with like gutters, is that, am I getting that correctly?
Well, right now out there, existing, you have plenty of asphalt, and it's going to the storm drainage, so we're going to reroute everything. If we add to the parking on the south or change the parking to the north, we're going to reroute it to your existing system as we have today.
Okay. And then Bob, from a public art standpoint, since it's a, a, a government building or a city building, it's exempt from the public art?
That's never been my understanding, uh, the way we've handled it, going back to the RO plant, was we assumed that we would need to pay the, uh, contribution into the public art fund, and, um, the way I've always handled that is just to put a line item in the bid, so the money filters right back to the public art as, as the contribution requires. I think it makes, sets a minimum of seventy-five thousand.
Okay. It works for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Terapany?
Thanks, Mayor. I also am excited about this project and share in the appreciation for the, uh, city clerks to have a new workspace. This city clerk and future city clerks, I think that this is going to be a nice addition to the city hall, uh, campus, so to speak. Couple of questions, um, Bob, based on what you have designed now, have you been able to do any, uh, forecasting in terms of costs?
Well, it's a very hard time to do cost forecasting, as I'm sure you know. Our best estimate is we're looking at probably thirty-five to fifty percent more than we had estimated years ago, that was pre-pandemic. So, um, you know, we really don't know for sure, so we're going to put it out to bid and see what the numbers are, and then we'll have to digest what those costs are, come back to you with a plan if, if the funding, wherever that funding lands.
So things like the brick, uh, facades, is that going to be a full brick or like a brick veneer, or do you know?
I think it's a full design, right?
Full brick?
Brick, brick veneer.
Oh, it is a veneer, okay.
Okay, so it'll be block and then a veneer on the top, okay. I have, uh, just a little bit of a concern in, in terms of the drive-through, I just wanted to discuss that and have you, see if you can walk me through it. So basically, the drive-through is going to be on the, uh, south side of the building, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I just want to make sure that there's not, or as little amount of, uh, traffic backing up into the street as possible, believe it or not, at, at some points, uh, throughout the course of the day, when, when bills are being paid, there is a line at the city clerk's drive-through. So I think you mentioned something about two lanes? So there will be two lanes?
That's correct.
Okay, so that'll help some of that traffic flow, then?
Right, so if you, you know, pull up and there's a long line, there'll be double wide, so you could actually get around, you could park, you could go in, or you could circle back and wait for the line to die down.
So one of the lines will be serviced by a window, and then the other drive-through will just be a drive-through line?
That's right.
It won't be like a, like at the bank teller where you put your payment in a plastic thing and it shoots over to the city clerk? Okay, so only one of the drive-throughs is actually serviceable?
That's correct.
Got it, okay. So do you have any concern with traffic backing up into the street?
I don't think so, I mean, we, we spent a lot of time thinking about that, and, um, Michelle and Irene, uh, Irene and I spoke about how many cars typically will queue there. I think, um, if they queue now, they queue into ring, uh, so we would have the same thing here. But now we have the ability for cars to see that backup and either choose to park and walk in, or circle around, or wait in ring. Thankfully, wing, ring is wide enough that can support queuing in, in the right of way, if need be.
Um, okay. And then, just so I understand, the southernmost portion of the new clerk's building will basically fall in line with where we store records now in the old police station?
That's right.
Okay, so that, that, uh, old police station is not being demolished?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I had, I look forward to seeing, uh, the cost come back, I think it might scare us, but, you know, what are you going to do? So, uh, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions, the first one being what the actual effect on the parking numbers is going to be, like, so how many we have now versus how many this design is going to let us have?
Yeah, uh, currently there's sixty-three, and with the new design, we got to fifty-nine, so we did the best we could to get back up to the sixty-three, but, uh, we're about four short, but we still feel like it's the most optimal layout that we can come up with.
Okay. And then, uh, Commissioner Terapany mentioned it with the cost going up, uh, kind of a similar question with the supply chain issues, that kind of thing. What are we going to kind of hear back from, from you guys in terms of what option we want to take on this? If we're going to, you know, how fast we can get it done, if we're going to have to wait, or what the cost is going to look like now versus, you know, a guess later?
Well, I think that's, just speaks to the procurement schedule, and, um, you know, probably based on the final input tonight and any final, um, comments and input from, from staff to the architect, they're going to finish up the design here, probably in January, and then we'll be putting it out to bid at that point. So, you know, we'll probably get those numbers back in the spring. Specifically, I don't have a date for that yet, but that's about the timeframe for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Thank you, Mayor. On slide number eight, um, it shows the southern, um, plan view, the, um, the elevation. The, um, I, I see that a couple of brows there over the windows, and they're set back. And I see the drive-through, and Ms. Jacobs and I had a brief conversation, and I want to make sure that we don't miss one feature that I think is going to be added, which is, I, I don't want to call it the overhang, but a brow that's not shown there right now, is that correct?
That's correct, it's not shown there, but it will be, yes, you're right.
And, and these upper little rectangles high are the, uh, windows to provide light in, is that correct? That was the, from the security perspective, that was the direction that we wanted to go.
That's correct.
And I don't know whether, um, um, and I'm not sure what the length of the overhang is going to be or anything like that, but as far as the elevation, I know we've had problems in the past with vehicles running into the overhang, is this going to be? in the past with vehicles running into the overhang. Is this going to be an FDOT standard height to accommodate whatever drives in there, or is that going to be something lesser of a height? Do you know?
We'll have to stick to the FDOT standards to make sure that, you know, the truck doesn't go through there and knock it off.
So you may have to play a little bit with the height of those windows up there. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And, and I really don't want to get into your business, but we talked a little bit about knee bracing underneath. A lot of our historic buildings have got a support rod that goes over the top from the outside edge of the overhang back into the, back into the building. I think that might look a little nicer than having a, you know, an angle or a brace coming in from underneath, which also would potentially interfere with the truck. I don't want to, you'll deal with it. We'll see it when it comes back as far as the final plan, but I just wanted to mention, it's the old engineer coming out at me. Anyway, I love the building. Ms. Jacobs is excited about it, and that speaks enough for me, and I'm ready to go to bid. And I think the original, if I'm not mistaken, was right around $700,000 or $800,000 was the original budget?
No, it was just under a million for construction.
Just under a million, okay. Well, we'll see what comes back. I feel better about the million than the 700. I think that might be a hard one to handle at, at the square footage cost that we're seeing right now coming back. So, and that budget is Mr. Robertson just for the building, or is that include the site work as well?
It's for everything, yeah.
For everything. Yeah, we might have a little bit of a challenge with that.
I agree.
So, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other call, please?
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes. Thank you. We're now going to take 10 minutes break. We'll be back.
We are now reconvening the BOC meeting at 8:26 PM. And we go to the item number eight, which is to authorize execution of interlocal agreement with Pinellas County for acceptance of Army Corps funds and update on dredge project. Before we go to staff report, I'd like to ask our seat attorney, being that this is a, in agreement, it's a legal document, do you need to, do you need to comment on that?
I'd be happy to. I mean, I've, I was, I participated in the drafting of the document, the language and so forth. I'm satisfied with the way that it's, it's been created, and I think it is obviously beneficial to the city, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and as you said, for the site, we're requesting the board's approval of an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County to reallocate donated funds for the dredge project. And so to summarize this, Pinellas County agreed to contribute $300,000 to the city towards the dredging of Yanklet River a couple of years ago. The city paid this $300 directly to the Army Corps of Engineers to be used for the engineering work. So it turns out the Army needed less than $100,000 of this money and would like to refund the difference back to the city, just over $214,000. So when I heard about that, I reached out to Pinellas County, and they agreed to allow the city to reallocate the, the funds back to the dredge project, and they stipulating that the funds needed to go back to, or to be used for restoration activities of the spoil site. So that's what they asked for. And so to that end, the county prepared an interlocal agreement to capture the terms. As you heard, Attorney Trask has, has reviewed and provided input on the agreement, and now we're asking the board to approve it. That's it for Mayor.
And you also have an update to tell us on the, on the dredging, right?
Sure. Would you like me to get into that now?
Please.
Okay. So just briefly to update you where we are in the dredge, the Army Corps has their contractor, they are under contract, and I've been participating in weekly meetings with the Army and their dredge contractors, so I'm staying up to date on it. The main issue they're running into right now is relocation of gopher tortoises from the site. That's a pretty common issue right now, mostly because recipient sites in the state have been really unavailable. We just heard on Thursday some good news that a site in Arcadia just opened up a, a whole bunch of new sites, they got permitted for new sites, and so the Army and their contractor are moving to get those permitted and move now. But this has caused us quite a bit of delay. It may cause more delay because there are temperature restrictions to relocating gopher tortoises related to moving them, and so that they can survive, they can't be moved if temperatures are, I think, sustained under 50 degrees for multiple days in a row, and we're getting into that time of year now. So the timing on this is still uncertain. We've definitely lost a few months, and depending on when these turtle, tortoises get relocated, we're probably not going to see any work on the, at the DMMA site where they build the, where the, I keep saying DMMA, the spoil site, where they're going to build the, the berms to treat the, the dredge materials. Probably not going to see that till at least the spring. So that's the best I have for you, and I'm at least able to port a little bit of good news as of Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We go into public comments on this item? Do we have any public comments on this item? I hear none? Okay, gonna need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah. Mr. Robertson, I want to thank you for the presentation, and I will thank you for all the good work that you do.
Thank you.
And thanks for the update on the, on the dredging, even though that, that's, I was hoping that we actually start doing the dredge earlier, but we have to relocate those animals, so it's very, very important. But also, I'm very appreciative to Pinellas County Commissioners for agree to reallocate the $240,000 that they are left over from the Army Corps of Engineers and to use it for the spoil site. That's going to be a lot of help to us, so thank you for that. Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, appreciate the update on this. That 214, is that something that the city has set aside for the spoil site, or is the state going to fund that, or where is the funding going to come from that initially?
So the 214 is money that was paid to us and transferred to the Army Corps, and it'll come back to us. So we'll set that aside to be used for restoration activities of the spoil site.
So how are we going to pay for restoration activities before? What was that plan for that?
It's coming from two sources, city funds and from state funding.
Okay, so that, that could help offset the city funding that-
Absolutely.
Okay, and we could help cover the manatee watchers and things like that that we had to pay, right?
And incidentally, yes, sir, and incidentally, well, not, not for that, let me make sure-
I mean, the city side, the city function of it, right?
Be accurate, yes. It's only for the spoil site stuff, the manatee watching, that's not related to the spoil site, so the county was very clear, they didn't want it to apply for that. But this also could be used for helping us offset costs related to extending the lease of the property, which we'll need to do because the project has been delayed, so I'm grateful to have that.
Okay, no, I think it's great news. Appreciate it.
Commission, Chair Pann.
Bob, thanks for the update. I definitely, you know, anytime the county wants to let us have some money that they've already given to us, I think that we'll gladly accept it. So definitely a little bit disappointed about the turtle situation, but that is what it is. I'm glad to know that we're adhering to the regulations, at least our contractors are. So just keep us posted on that, and thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Commission Donovan, no comment?
My question's been answered, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commission Vaticioures.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the, the contract was signed when, Mr. Robertson, back in August or so?
Yes, and, well, actually, their notice received was July 1.
July 1?
Yes.
And so we're not going to construct a disposal pond site till spring, and I, I'm hoping, and maybe you've got the information or the answer already, are they going to extend that one-year period for the dredging? Remember, the, the dredge contract was for one year, and, and we kept asking whether it was going to be sufficient, and the Army Corps kind of represented that it was, but it doesn't seem like that may be the case here.
They may need to, yes.
Would you be able to confer, confirm that as far as seeing what the process is so we don't wind up? The Army Corps is real rigid, we, we learned that a long time ago, and I'd hate for this contract to expire and then them, the Army Corps claim that they've got to rebid it all over again soon. So if we can-
Sure.
Please check on that, thank you.
Glad to.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Here none?
Commissioner Vaticioures?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Yes. We go into the item number nine, which is the approval of public art installation of the Sponge Docks. Staff report.
Diane Wood, Culture and Civic Services Director. The Public Art Committee approved the purchase of Mr. Mike Elwell's Pelican sculpture at the December meeting, and you have a little bit of backup there on a picture of the, the statue, as well as a lot of background on the, the artist. He's very well-known, in fact, I have pictures myself of some of his work that is now currently at, on Beach Avenue and downtown St. Pete, that has been there for many, many years. He's very well-known, his work is very high-quality, and the Public Art Committee felt like, you know, with the Niyads and Alma the Mermaid at the, at Craig Park, that this would be a great addition to the Sponge Docks. It's $30,000, and he is actually, with the approval of the Board of Commissioners, he's going to be putting a brand-new patina at no additional cost to us, which he said is probably, you know, anywhere between $2,000 and $5,000 in value, and he's going to deliver it himself, as well as, the Pelican has a TB on his baseball cap for Tampa Bay Rays, and so he's going to change that for us to TS for Tarpon Springs. So the Public Art Committee felt like it was a very good investment, and so they're asking for approval from the Board of Commissioners for the purchase.
Thank you. Do you have anything to, to add to that, or you're done with it?
I'm done.
Okay. For the public comments.
Okay.
Are there any public comments on this item? Ms. Jennings, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah.
I saw you standing there.
Well, I was just here to back up Diane, but I think she explained everything very well. We had another sculpture, a similar sculpture by a local artist that was approved for the location on the Sponge Docks, and he kind of dematerialized, we don't know what became of him. But the significance of having a pelican at that site was kind of made even more important to me when Commissioner Vaticioures told me that for 50 years, there were fish cleaning stations at that location which attracted pelicans. So I think it's not only going to be artistically appropriate, but culturally and historically appropriate, to put it where, where, where it's going, which is pretty much around the, where the prow of the Two Georges comes in on the Sponge Docks. It is on city-owned property, there was concern about the heat of the bench, because it is made of metal, but we've had some discussions about either using some kind of paint or possibly putting a rubber pad on the bench to kind of mitigate that, because we don't want any damage. Attorney Trask, I did notice the slight oversight on point four on page two of the contract, and the name's, the city representative is Denise Manning, I believe it should be Diane Wood. I don't know if that affects anything. Just leave it if, if it does. Does any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for me? I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, by the way, we did determine that there was more than enough money in the public art fund to cover the cost of the sculpture.
We're going to go to public comments?
Again, David Ballaguetis Jr., Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Pelicans don't wear baseball hats. I would think $30,000 be more relevant to have a fish in his mouth than a baseball hat on his head. Silly artwork to me isn't appealing. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. You know, this is really interesting sculpture, and it seems like it's appropriate for that location, right next to the, to the Two Georges, and because a lot of pelicans are actually attracted there to, to be fed, when the Two Georges party boat, they're actually cleaning the, the fish. The question that I have is, if I read this correctly, the sculpture is used?
It was, Mr. Elwell has realized that, you know, at his age, he just wanted to divest himself of a lot of his pieces, and we've, Tarpon Springs, I'm happy to say, has gotten quite a bit of notice, not only on the local, but the national scene, and then we've been approached by a lot of really quality artists about doing projects here. And he made a presentation at the November PAC meeting indicating his interest in, you know, providing Tarpon Springs with one of his pieces. And they're, they're primarily down in St. Petersburg, I think a lot of people have seen them and known them, and you know how strongly I feel about, you know, keeping things local and really keeping artwork in the spirit of the culture and history of Tarpon Springs, but I just felt that, given its location, and as you said, Mr. Mayor, the, you know, the predominance of the pelicans at that particular location, we thought it was appropriate, the price was right, and it, it was installed at another location, but it is an original piece, and I believe if you looked at the, the contract, the city attorney, you know, drew up, the city will retain ownership of it, there's, it's got, we will retain copyright, and no copies will be made, so it will be a unique piece.
When it was created, do you know?
I'm not sure, I don't think it was all that long ago.
It might be in that-
It might be in the, right, it might be in your backup material.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
We could find out, if you'd like.
Did anybody have the opportunity to inspect the, the sculpture, make sure there's no, no defects, no deterioration?
I believe he guaranteed-
Because it's used?
Right, but I believe he, as Diane indicated, I believe he is including all kinds of repatinization and, you know, refinishing of the sculpture, so if there is anything, it will be repaired or refinished.
Okay.
So, and I believe Attorney Trask also has a lot of provisions in the, in the contract, which we're asking you to approve tonight, that would cover, you know, anything like that, that would have to be, you know, dealt with.
Mr. Trask, is that in the contract that the, the sculpture will be inspected to make sure that's no defects or any deterioration, being that it's used?
There's several provisions in the contract that would protect the city, but the biggest one is, is that you don't have to make payment until such time it, it is accepted by the city.
Okay.
So if it's not acceptable by the city, he will not get payment for it.
Good.
Yeah.
I think that's considered motivation.
Sure. Thank you, and thank you for all your work, I really appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome. It's, it's been a joy doing this for the city.
Yeah, everybody likes the signs that you got there, those solar signs, they're nice. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Jennings, Mr. Woods, thank you for the presentation tonight, and thank you for bringing this before us. I love this idea, any interactive art that we could have, something that fits to what is in Tarpon Springs as well, too. I think it's just a, a great fit. At the end of the day, $30,000 is a lot of money, but when we're looking at a bronze sculpture that's custom, that's one-of-a-kind, it's very, very minimal for what these would go for traditionally. A little more background, I did visit Actulus in September when I was down in St. Pete, and he's got a handful of these benches, Mayor, down in the same area, and so he put them on loan, I guess, to the local businesses, I did a little more, more research on it, to where he didn't sell them to the businesses, he just put them on loan so they could put them out in front of their businesses. And he's gotten to the point where he's like, someone needs to buy them now, I'm not going to let them sit out for free any longer, and so that's why he has like four sale signs listed on them, on the pieces as well, too. So technically, no one actually owned it other than him, which is pretty unique, so I'm like really, really excited about this, to be a piece that could be, I think it's going to be a great asset of interactive art to add to the public art scene in Tarpon Springs. I think the tourists and local individuals are going to enjoy it, too. It's going to be a great posting area overall, so I appreciate the support of that.
And the credit kind of creates a link in walking the docks between the Niyads and the Sponge Diver statue.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think the location is good, too.
I appreciate the, the research that you did on the, making sure no one's going to get burnt when they sit on the bench as well, too.
Well, we have to thank the town attorney, too, for ensuring everything goes as planned.
I'm looking forward to it. Is there a timeline, Ms. Jennings?
I believe, I mean, it's, I believe it's going to be done fairly quickly, Attorney Trask?
We don't have a, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane.
We don't have a timeline, he was, it was pending approval from the Board of Commissioners, but he has already started working on redoing the patina and changing the ball cap because he was excited to, you know, for us to have, you know, this pelican, so, you know.
Great, thank you very much.
So I was saying, well, you might want to wait, but, you know, but he's, you know, he, he loves his art, and I'm excited from the standpoint that he's a very renowned artist in our local area, you know, bringing, you know, that to Tarpon Springs, too, it just kind of, you know, really is something, I think, important for Pinellas County as well, so we can all be proud of it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Commission Tera Pann?
Thanks, Mayor. Diane, you said the word "investment," and I've heard you say that several times when talking about our public art, and I think that that, that's a great way to look at it and refer to it, especially as we continue to, to build our local collection and our, our portfolio. So I'm appreciative that that is how you're looking at it and trying to mention that in the public setting, because I look at it like that, too, especially when we're, when we're buying one-of-a-kind pieces or we're having commissioned one-of-a-kind pieces, so I think that that's absolutely a, a perfect way to, to look at what we're doing with our, with our city's collection. So my, my point being in bringing this up, aside from trying to highlight it, is that do we have any insurance policy in place for, for our public art? I know that we require the artist to carry insurance during installation or creating or whatever, but do we also carry a policy that covers our collection?
Yes, sir, we do. As soon as we, we acquire the piece of art, we give that information to our HR department, and Jane does acquire insurance for it.
Piece by piece, or we have like an umbrella?
Yes, piece by piece.
Gotcha.
Or I, I'd have to check and see if there's a blanket insurance policy, but I will ask her that, but I understand that I, I give that to her every time we acquire a piece, and, and with the value and everything, and she does handle that.
So does, great, thank you.
If I can make a comment to that, too, Commissioner Tera Pann? Recently, we had an issue with the Niyads, you probably noticed that two of them were missing. It seems that the Niyads were originally designed for interior exhibition, not to be installed outside, and one of them actually toppled over. So they're in the process of being reinforced, and the cost for repairing them to make them firmly embedded in the, the roundabout, $17,000, which was all covered by insurance.
Great.
Okay.
And thank you, Diane, for taking care of that.
Sure.
Mr. Trask?
I just want to let you know that there is a provision in the contract that says the project will be fully installed and completed by January 7th, 2022. So there is a date certain in it, I just wanted you to know that.
January 7th?
January 7th.
Why don't you do a few days before that, so we can have it for the epiphany?
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trask.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of this, I, I'm really appreciative of your guys' work on it, I think it's going to look good down there, I really like how it's interactive. The only thing I don't like is that it's ruining a pretty good pun, it's catching some rays, it's pelican sitting out in the sun, and he's wearing a Tampa Bay Rays hat, so you get the double raise there, so I-
We'll have to have him rename it.
Yeah, so, so maybe a, maybe a name change, but other than that, I really like it, and thank you guys for your work on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Commission Vaticioures?
Right, does the pelican have a name?
Oh, we can come up with one name, we can have a contest.
Actually, actually, the pelican looks like the fishermen that go on the fishing boats down there, so I, I think it's a great break from traditional art, as I would see it, like the Niyads and some of these others, the Storytime down by the Cultural Center. I think it's just great, and it's, it's a little, excuse the word, funky, but it belongs to be, it needs to be down there, because all the fishermen are all characters down there, so, and then the pelicans are, too. The only thing that's missing is, Ms. Jennings and I had discussed, is a little cat named Sylvester that used to actually jump after the pelicans for about 20 years until it died. So that was always, not just the pelicans diving for, going after the carcasses of the fish that were clean, but Sylvester the cat diving from the seawall to the pelicans as they went for the fish as well. So a lot of the people remember that, and it's just a story that, that continues, and certainly this is going to help promote that lasting, you know, the fishing boats are kind of a dying breed these days, and, and anything that we can do to commemorate the, kind of the, the history of that, and also the, the, the environment that was down there, and the festive atmosphere that goes along with the fishing is great. I also want to commend the Public Art Committee, you always do a great job, you think things through, and you don't overreact to things, and you're very careful about what you do, including picking the artists, so I very much appreciate that. Thank you. And Ms. Woods, that goes for you as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, one other quick comment is, if I can refer back to the grant application, where the Public Art Committee has put out a call to artists for a Black History project, which would probably end up tying very much in with the topics that are covered by that grant, and the response to the call to artists was astounding. We got 14 major proposals, one from Spain and one from a group that did a sculpture at the 9/11 Memorial in New York, and because of the response to that, we've been getting proposals from artists not only around the country, but around the world, we just got a proposal for a grouping of animals from Australia. So we're putting Tarpon on the map artistically, I'm very proud of it.
Unsolicited.
Unsolicited, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Roco, please.
Commissioner Vaticioures?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number 10, is the appointments to Housing Authority Board. We need to reappoint Linda Herrick, Arlene Sullivan, Jacqueline Malone, and Mary Lee Matthews for another four-year term, which expires November 25th, 2025. We also need to fill unexpired term of Mr. Dennis Garvey. His term expires November 22nd, 2024. We only have one person available, this is Karma Wilson Lake, and she is an excellent Before I ask for a motion, we're going to go to the public comments. Do you have any public comments on this item? I hear none? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the individuals listed, and number one, with the addition of adding Cameron Lake to fulfill the unexpired term of Dennis Garvey.
Second.
Are there any commission comments on this item? Here none? Roco?
Commissioner Vaticioures?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes. Thank you. And now we're going to go to item number 11, which is Concerned Citizens of Tarper Springs Incorporated versus the Seat of Tarper Springs, case number 21000030, AP, consideration of motion for stay pending appeal. We have a motion by the Concerned Citizens requesting a grant, a stay to stop development for the Ankle Harbor project until all appeals are resolved. Of course, we're going to hear arguments from both, both parties, but before we go to that, I'd like to ask our seat attorney to explain this item and the process to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, that there have been three petitions for writ of certiorari that have been filed by Concerned Citizens of Tarpon Springs, Inc. The most, the latest one was this past Friday. They all challenge separately the different ordinances and resolutions that have been adopted, the first one being Ordinance 2020-34 and Resolution 2021-52, and most recently, the ordinance that was adopted, 2021-15 and Resolution 2021-60. As you had mentioned, Mayor, they're asking for the commission to approve the motion to stay pending appeal. That stay would basically stay the enforcement of those ordinances and resolutions that I just read. It'll also stay the issuance of building permits or other permits that would be issued to move the project forward. The motion to, motion for stay pending appeal, when you decide that, there are a couple of different criteria you probably should consider.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can I please ask that Commissioner Tarrapani recuses himself?
Would you please wait, because that's what we're gonna do next.
Okay, I just, because he's sitting here while this is...
We give you the floor when it comes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So a motion seeking stay of a lower tribunal's order, that's the City of Tarpon Springs, the Board of Commissioners is considered the lower tribunal. The motion must demonstrate one of three things, and that is, the first one is the substantial likelihood of prevailing on appeal. Number two, irreparable harm to the movement, that's Concerned Citizens, if the motion is not granted, or three, is showing that the stay would be in the public's best interest. So one of those three things would have to be met for the granting of the stay. Yesterday, I had provided the attorneys for both Concerned Citizens and Morgan Group a process that we thought was most appropriate to consider the motion for stay pending appeal, since the rules of procedure don't provide for that. And I provided that to all the attorneys in email, and they acknowledged receipt of it. So I would suggest the following to occur. You've already announced the agenda item, Mayor, so the second thing would be Concerned Citizens would be given five minutes to present its argument. Morgan Group would be given five minutes to present its argument, and then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. The normal time limits would apply for each speaker from the public, and that is four minutes, and then the public portion of the meeting would be closed. I would ask you pursuant to your rule after that is done, to consider the motion to grant the stay and make the motion in the affirmative, so it would be a motion to grant the stay, and then you would either vote it up or down. And once we get to that point, if it, if it passes, I'd like to talk to you about the next step.
Thank you.
So with that being said, I know that Commissioner Tarrapani is probably gonna want to abstain at this point.
Yeah, I was going to say that I got indication here that Commissioner Tarrapani wants to speak.
Yeah, I was just gonna, as y'all know, I have a conflict of interest here, so I'll be recusing myself tonight, and being it's the last item on the agenda, I'll be leaving the premises. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we could go ahead and proceed with Concerned.
Okay, yeah. We're now, now I'd like to invite the Concerned Citizens, and they will give you five minutes to present their argument.
Okay, first, I'd like to make, good evening, Commission. My name is Jane Graham, Sunshine City Law. I'd like to make an objection first to the procedure that city attorney had sent yesterday. This is a judicial procedure per Florida appellate rule 9.190E3 that has to be in front of the lower tribunal. I know it's, first of all, probably pretty awkward for me to be in front of you, seeing that you are the adverse party for three pending lawsuits right now in Pinellas County, Pinellas Circuit Court. But the reason why we had to do this is it's based on the language of the rule. That said, because it's, it's a Florida appellate rule, we would say that at minimum, even though this is judicial procedure, it should be treated as a quasi-judicial procedure. There should be ex parte disclosures. Again, your city attorney has made up new rules on an ad hoc basis without preserving the right of the moving party. We object that this procedure prescribed by the city attorney has not afforded Concerned Citizens an opportunity to present evidence or witnesses for the stay, but then has created a whole process by which the Morgan Group may present evidence to establish an amount of the bond. We find this lopsided and outrageous. We object that you're even, what is in the, the email from city attorney Trask, the next step regards the setting of a bond. We object that you would even talk about a bond here tonight. It's not relevant to the issue. There's no discovery. The purpose of a bond in an appeal is so that the other party may be made whole if the appeal is not successful. The bond preserves the rights of the parties by maintaining the status quo during the period of time of which the enforcement of the judgment has been suspended. Here, the status quo is that the Morgan Group, who is not a property owner, is in the process of getting a number of permits approved, and they, they have a speculative interest. The one who stands to lose is Concerned Citizens from the destruction of thousands of trees and degradation of property. So, I mean, with that, I just wanted to first lodge these objections to the general procedure, and then also argue, and also move that we've been given five minutes to present our argument, followed by Morgan Group, but no chance to rebut Morgan Group's argument. So I would kindly request that we're afforded the opportunity for a rebuttal.
Mrs. Graham, we're gonna take the advice of our local advisor, our city attorney. So if you please continue, and your time starts at five minutes.
Okay, well, good evening. Pursuant to Florida appellate rule 9.190E3, we respectfully request that you stay enforcement of ordinance 202034, resolution 202152, ordinance 202115, and resolution 202160, and stay the issuance of any building permit, tree removal permit, certificate of occupancy, or other city-issued permit, contract, or approval relating to the Anclot Harbor project, pending the disposition of case numbers 21-4 AP, 30 AP, and 31 AP. The issues on appeal have merit and are likely to prevail. First, regarding the petition that was filed on February, February 15th, Morgan Group argues that that's moot. Well, it's not moot as long as ordinance 202034 hasn't been repealed. It's not the exact match on the legal description, so the new ordinance has not been superseded. And by the way, since last July, the city and Morgan Group have both repeatedly referenced what happens if the new ordinance is not in play, which is, it falls back on the old ordinance. I'd like Mr. Armstrong, as an officer of the court, to stand up here and say that 2020-34 is dead and moot, and if the new ordinance and resolutions are quashed, they will not exercise their purported rights under the old ordinance. I don't think he's going to do that. Plus, on September 20th, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended denial of the Anclot Harbor project, and then the next day, Mr. Armstrong sent a letter to Trask asking for an extension of their rights under 202034 until August 2023. The petition's arguments stand on their own, and I urge you all to read them, all hundred twenty-plus pages that I wrote. Petitions stand on their own. They're repeat instances of procedural due process violations, which appear to be occurring tonight, well, actually are occurring tonight as well, ad hoc processes invented by the city attorney. There also are numerous departures from the essential requirements of law, as pointed out by our planning expert, Mr. Garing, during the October 27th hearing. The conditional use approval of a primary residential use in CG is a backdoor effort to change the future land use on the parcel without complying with the required future land use map amendment procedures per Florida statutes, and the on-balance methodology was wrong. We have case law specifically on point. Courts look to the plain language of ordinances and rules for their meeting. This didn't happen in numerous places. Morgan Group claims that while ambiguity is construed in favor of the property owner, and that's right, except this isn't ambiguous. There is plain language, and I do urge you, as members of the commission, to read your code very, very carefully and think about this. Concerned citizens will be irreparably harmed. It will result in the immediate destruction and degradation of important habitat and the immediate harm and harassment to wildlife. If Concerned Citizens prevails on appeal and construction has begun, damage to this habitat cannot be undone or restored. I should add that the petition for writ of cert is an expedited legal proceeding. This isn't like protracted twenty-year litigation on Clean Water Act issues in federal court. This is a, a short petition for writ of certiorari. So with that, we, we do request time for rebuttal of, of Morgan Group, and I'll leave it at that.
Arlene, how much time, how much time is left right now?
One minute and twelve seconds.
Okay, so you wanna reserve that?
I do, I reserve that.
Okay. We'll let them have that additional minute after Morgan Group goes then, Mayor.
We're now inviting the Morgan Group to give five minutes to present their argument.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission, my name is Scott McLaren. I'm here on behalf of the Morgan Group. Before I get started with my five minutes, I would like to respond to the objection. The procedure established by the city treats both parties the same. There was an objection related to the Morgan Group having time to present evidence on a bond if the motion is granted. By my reading of the procedure, both parties were allotted the same amount of time to present evidence on the bond if, again, if the commission finds that a stay is appropriate. In essence, Ms. Graham's objection is an objection to the very rule that she is proceeding under tonight. She doesn't like the fact that she, this is a, a stay. It's not a full-blown evidentiary hearing. She complains that Morgan is not a, a landowner. Fact is, Morgan is a contract buyer here. They are the equitable title holder under Florida law. Concerned Citizens, on the other hand, has no rights. They own nothing. They own no interest in this land. They have no interest in any of the trees or anything on the land or near the land. So that's my response to the objection. So if I, if I could argue the motion at this point now.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Would you please reset the time?
We haven't. Let's reset.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would rely on our papers that we filed primarily, but what Ms. Graham and Concerned Citizens is asking this commission to do in this motion is truly unprecedented. Never in the history of Florida jurisprudence has any tribunal granted a stay of a land development permit under this rule, not one time. No provision in your code would authorize the stay. Simply put, the motion has no basis in fact and law. What this motion really is, is a backdoor attempt to deny and kill the project. What Concerned Citizens' strategy is, is to stay our approvals and then time out the project, because a building permit cannot be issued within the, the period of the stay. To seek the stay, Concerned Citizens has a heavy burden. They must prove all of the following, that their three pending cases have a substantial likelihood of success on the merits, and that if a stay is not granted, Concerned Citizens will suffer harm. They can't just say harm will be suffered, which is what they're trying to argue tonight. They have to show that Concerned Citizens will suffer harm. Not the community at large, not the trees, not the eagles, not the, the fish, or whatever they're talking about, but Concerned Citizens, the, Concerned Citizens, the entity, will actually have to suffer harm. That is their burden. I'd like to talk about the first criterion, the substantial likelihood of success on the petition. Concerned Citizens has filed three scattershot lawsuits claiming a variety of alleged violations. Just to point out a few, Ms. Graham raised the, the first lawsuit. She says that the lawsuit is not moot, and that we, Morgan Group, have contended that it is. In Ms. Graham's papers in that very lawsuit, she represented to the court, she represented to the court that if this tribunal granted our approvals in the fall of this year, the ones in October, November, that if that happened, that the old ordinance, ordinance 2020-34, which was approved in January, that it would be moot. Yet she stands in front of this tribunal and tells this tribunal that it's not moot. Secondly, on her due process arguments, there, I've counted five different due process arguments. She claims that the over twenty-four hours of hearing time that this tribunal put in, listening to all the testimony and evidence, was, was simply not enough, that that did not give her and her clients due process, that she didn't receive due process with twenty-four hours of hearing time. What due process requires respectfully is notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard. I've been doing this for a long time. I've been practicing law for thirty-one years. I've never seen a tribunal be more patient and provide more time and more notice to anyone than this tribunal provided to Concerned Citizens and its members in this case. Concerned Citizens' due process arguments demonstrate the futility of their overall position. On competent substantial evidence, the city staff's recommendation alone of approval, that's competent substantial evidence under the law, and that's even without the ten or so experts that Morgan presented also providing competent substantial evidence. The legal arguments in all three petitions, just like tonight, are contrary to law and to the code. Regarding the second criterion that, that is Concerned Citizens can't, must prove that it is suffering significant harm if the tribunal does not grant the stay, Concerned Citizens cannot prove any harm. What harm have we heard tonight that is going to happen to Concerned Citizens, the entity? What harm will be suffered? Have you heard any harm? There will be no harm. We respectfully submit that the motion be denied, and we also submit, for the benefit of the commission, that they make findings as to the reasons for the denial of the stay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You have ten seconds left. You wanna use that?
No, sir, unless anyone on the commission has any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have one minute and twelve seconds left.
Okay, in response to what Concerned Citizens will suffer, Concerned Citizens has been an organization for over fifteen years dedicated to preserve the life, health, and environmental beauty of the Anclot River. It's in the bylaws and mission statement, which I could submit into the record if you were taking that. They will suffer because their members enjoy the immediate surrounding area through kayaking, fishing, birding, stargazing, hiking, and drone photography, among other activities, and to, to build on this site, as we have repeatedly said, will irreparably harm the, the property and Concerned Citizens' ability to enjoy it. Morgan Group is not a property owner. They've cited no case that speaks to their equitable, their equitable title as, as a property owner. Their argument mentions Burt Harris Act, which clearly only applies to property owners. And finally, as far as what's, what's happened since July, in July, it was, it appeared that the, okay.
Time has expired.
All right.
Thank you. We now go into the public comments of this item. If anyone has any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, you'll be given four minutes.
David Ballard, Gettys Jr., 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. I question, is this parcel of property as strategically located, having both controlling location of both land and sea capabilities, located at the bottleneck of Pinellas County, as a keystone property of Pinellas County? I question the actual future use... I question the actual future use of this property as deployed. Furthermore, is or will the dredging of the Anclot River enhance this property? Or they are intended to benefit in some way to this property in such development and future possible deployment capabilities? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Name's Joyce Pappas. I am an owner at 713 Zodikene's Boulevard. My family's been on the sponge docks for, since 1949. Previous lawyer, Morgan Group, said that there would be no harm. A prime example, the weather is very unpredictable. Look what happened in Mayfield, Kentucky. And you've been advised by the Pinellas County, you have been advised by your zoning and planning board, that it is a very risky project, and the harm it would be. I want to know as an owner, if we should have a hurricane, which we have every year, who do I go to for damages? Do I go to the commissioners? Do I go to the Terrapini family? Do I go to the Morgan Group? I would like to know who would be responsible for the Anclot River. Ya, you know, we talk about the concern of the Anclot River's survival, and, and nobody is concerned. It already floods and minor rainstorms. Ya have never done that. So I suggest you think about it, and I commend this commission for the progress that they have done, I'm sorry about the boom, in Tarpon. The mayor and the commission has improved and promoted Tarpon and the beauty of Tarpon, but let me tell ya, if it, if this goes down, the legacy ya are going to be remembered for is the destruction of the sponge docks. Thank you.
Craig Lunt, 743 Chesapeake. I'm not a lawyer, and I just heard one say that he had 30 years' experience, but we have some difference in opinion as to what equitable title actually stands for. Within their letter that they sent to the commission, they said that the stay would deny Morgan the opportunity to exercise its constitutionally protected property rights. Well, it does not have any property rights. It is not the owner of the property. It might have equitable title to that, but equitable title is typically defined as being able to have, and I'll read this legal jargon because I'm, I'm not familiar with it. Equitable title is essential for land buyers and sellers because they protect the rights of a contract, but it only allows them appreciable use. They cannot change the land. They cannot develop it. They cannot do anything because they don't own it. So I'm finished. That's, that's all you need to hear about that. They don't own the property. A stay would only prevent them from doing any development on that property, which, which they shouldn't be doing anyway until they own that property, until the court case in Pinellas is, is resolved, and I think it should be stayed.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I agree with what Mr. Lunt just said. That was my question as well. I'm not an attorney, but it has here the action that the concerned citizens' request the city commission to take is not only unprecedented, but also would deny Morgan the opportunity to exercise its constitutionally protected property rights. They don't have that. So that would be number one. Number two, this project was the quickest project fast-tracked through Tarpon Springs I've ever seen. It is a huge, huge project. What is the rush to pass and, and to not give the concerned citizens the right to protest this? That's what I'd like to know. This whole thing went through like a lightning storm. We don't have agreement from the FDOT. Most of the paperwork that we received prior to the, your vote was given hours before the vote. You couldn't even read the amount of paperwork that came. I don't understand how this could just go down like this. This second exit was an afterthought. So many things are up for question. Why are you going to pass it tonight? Or I should say deny, this should be denied. We had 31 pages that came today. I read through it all, and I just don't see that they have the right to ask you to, to go ahead with this. I, I do think they should be allowed to present their case, whether it takes six months. That's what the case takes. Why are we rushing it? We rushed through everything. The planning and zoning board, you know, they voted it down six to one. You guys voted it up three to one. Why? Did you guys at all give any findings of fact of why your decision was a better decision than the planning and zoning board? I mean, I was here for the planning and zoning board. They all made sense. When you guys made your vote, I didn't really hear anybody give a reason why your decision is better than theirs. So let's make a better decision today and give the concerned citizens the time to at least bring their case. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next person, please. Do we have any added public comments?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Robert Rockline, 755 Northlake Boulevard in Tarpon Springs. Didn't plan on speaking tonight, but let me start by wishing you and yours a very happy and healthy Christmas and New Year's season. I thank you for your public service. It's very commendable. I myself have been employed in public service for 39 years, 20 of that in law enforcement, 19 in fire and building code enforcement. I've seen the criminal and the civil side to a lot of litigation and appeals. I hate legalese. The Lord knows that. My wife knows that. Where the truth really lies, it's probably up to the, the gentleman upstairs. But here's an opportunity to push pause. Whether or not a mistake was made or something was overlooked, it's an opportunity that not quite often doesn't present itself. As far as the timeline developmentally up north, things take years, years, sometimes decade or two to finally unfold, because better that you measure twice before you cut once. So this is a rare opportunity. It takes a brave man to say, let me step back and let's recheck the numbers, let's dot the i's, cross the t's. It may be an opportunity that, once lost, then truly the citizens of Tarpon Springs are the affected party, and their children and grandchildren going forward, including the environment and including the traffic safety concerns. There's a lot, as other speakers have said, questions left unanswered. We deserve to have them answered. You deserve to have that answered. The developer, if they're correct with everything, that truth will prevail. They should have nothing to fear. We fear what we don't know. Here's a chance to, to go back in the books. I thank you again.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. The portion, the public portion of the meeting is now closed, and the chair will detain a motion.
Motion to grant, motion to stay.
Second. Okay, we're now going to the commission comments, and I'll start it. We had first and second reading with many, many hours of testimony, many hours. The application met all the requirements. No additional information has been received to change my mind. This case is in litigation. Let her proceed. I do not support the motion for stay. Vice Mayor?
I've got a quick question for our attorney. How long is a, I mean, it's a suit, so is that considered, or is it an appeal, which is a suit that's happening with the three lawsuits? Is that an appeal to the, the courts, or is it just a suit to stop the project? For clarification.
It's a petition for writ of cert. There's actually three of them. It's pending before the Circuit Court, and each one of the petitions asks for something a little bit different, but the bottom line is, is that they're asking the appellate court to overturn your, your decision to approve the project. That's the big picture view.
Okay. And then if the appellate court does overturn the project and permits have been issued, what would happen in that situation?
The developer basically takes that risk of moving forward, and they fully understand that.
Okay. And then how long does it usually take for an appellate court to review something like this?
I would say in the sixth month range. It could be longer depending upon whether there are motions to dismiss, which have to be heard before the actual reply briefs. The court has not even ordered the city to respond to the last two petitions for writ of cert.
Just a couple of comments real quick. I mean, there's been some public comment that there's many questions unanswered. For clarity, this is by far the longest, probably if you put all the quasi judicial hearings together that we've seen over the past five years, it may add up to this one quasi judicial hearing that we had for the total amount of hours. So the fact is, if there's unanswered questions, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think the commission has asked a significant amount of questions. And overall, along those lines, again, there's, we're not going to vote in something unless it's clear to us that they met the criteria. Again, I believe there's false information that continues to go out there, put on social media and set at the public podium during public comment. So you just have to be careful what you put out there from false information from a public setting. It's dangerous, and you're, you're causing issues with, within the public, so. But with that, I've got no further comments.
Commission, David.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, when it comes to the merits of the project itself, we had about 25 hours of quasi judicial hearings on that. So as far as, you know, the merits of the project, you can go back, re-watch the meetings, make the decision for yourself in your own mind. But as far as the motion to stay goes, it does interfere with the private property rights that the property owner has, and I'm not going to support that. Yeah?
Thank you. Commission, Tekeoros.
Well, I'd like to explore this a little deeper, take this seriously. I mean, we do represent all the residents in Tarpon Springs, and, and I'm not going to relitigate what happened a couple of months ago. Today, I exchanged some emails with Mr. Degenall, who's the, our attorney concerning this matter, because I didn't quite understand a lot of the maneuvering going on. You know, one objection I had, of course, was another last-minute submitted by the Morgan Group, another 23-page document on the day that we're supposed to have this hearing tonight. Mr. Degenall kind of explained the timing on it and suggested that it's just, that's the way it is, and I basically told him, well, I'm an engineer, he's an attorney, and I don't quite understand everything. But what I do know is that Ms. Graham and Mr. Armstrong and Mr. McLaren are officers of court, and they're sworn to tell the truth, and I, and I, I believe that. On the other hand, you've got a lawsuit, which means that there's two sides to the issue, and at some point, the judge is going to decide who prevails in this. So I, I'm not sure how you view that, that maybe one side's more truthful than the other, or maybe their argument is more relevant. I don't know. But what I'm going to try and do tonight, for me anyway, I've got some questions, and I'm going to try to do the best I can, given the framework, and, and we're not attorneys, I'm not an attorney, but I'm going to try to do my best to understand what the ramifications are of, of supporting a stay and what the ramifications are of not supporting a stay. The concerned citizens' pleadings, if you will, or their presentation was straightforward. I do have some questions for Ms. Graham, and I have some questions for Mr. McLaren, or not at this point yet, but, or Mr. Armstrong. But I do have some questions for our city attorney first, and the one thing I, I'm unclear of is whether in fact it's been settled whether the concerned citizens have been deemed to be an affected party. I, I know Mrs. Graham, I believe, claims that the, that the mayor made that decision, and I know that, I believe, Mr. Armstrong, at least in some of his pleadings this evening, suggests that that's not been determined. So, Mr. Trask, have they been deemed to be an affected party or not?
So I, I think the answer to the question is, is that when I had suggested at the original hearing and the secondary hearing that they be treated as an affected party for the purposes of an abundance of caution. As for whether or not the court deems them to be an affected party, that's something that will have to be decided later on. There may be motions made to determine that they are not an affected party, and that will ultimately affect their ability to move forward on those three petitions for writ of cert. So I don't know if that helps you at all, but that's what I was attempting to do in the very beginning.
So basically, I'm going to treat the concerned citizens and an effective party to be, affected party, be consistent with that. If the stay is approved this evening, does the commission have the discretion to remove the stay in the future?
The answer is yes.
Okay. And if it's not approved tonight, can the concerned citizens request a stay again in the future?
I think the answer is yes. It depends on whether or not that there has been any substantive change in the motion, but I would think yes, unless you act upon it now as an inner an order that says no, that you're going to treat it subject to their prejudice. I would not suggest that you do that.
Subject to?
In other words, is it with prejudice or without prejudice?
I follow you.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand that part. Would there be any opportunity for them to go to Circuit Court and take it to the next level if the stay is not granted this evening?
They can make any motion that they want at the appellate level, but the motion to stay would be heard here.
If, and I'm going to ask the Morgan Group a little later a couple of questions, but if the Morgan Group hasn't purchased the property, and, and I understand the equity title holder aspect of it, I'm not sure why, and I do know that the Morgan Group is acting as an agent for Walmart in the permitting, and I, I'm not sure I understand why isn't the Walmart a named party in this matter? Is that not the way it works in this situation?
The concerned citizens decided to. They wanted to sue, and they've included the parties they think are appropriate. I don't know why they did what they did.
Okay. Let me mark that out. The stay this evening, the request for the stay this evening is for city permits. Is that correct? It doesn't affect non-city permits, FDOT, Swiftmont, DEP?
Well, the stay is for a couple of different things. The stay is to stay the enforcement of the ordinances and resolutions, and also to stay the issuance of the building permits. And I think Ms. Graham was very specific as to what type of permits that she was talking about. They're also listed in the motion to stay.
I understand city's got jurisdiction over FDOT or Swiftmont or DEP.
They don't. The question is, is whether or not FDOT would process an application when the, when there has been no approval by the city. If there is a stay of the enforcement, there is an argument that there is no approval by the city.
You mean, you're saying that a stay in effect? You mean, you're saying that a stay in effect says that the approval is stay, or that, that the work in approving permits is, you know, is put on hold?
The stay, I'll just read the motion. Stay the enforcement of ordinance 2020-34, resolution 2021-52, ordinance 2021-15, and resolution 2021-60, and stay the issuance of any building permit, tree removal permit, certificate of occupancy, or any other city issued permit contract or approval relating to the Annquoth Harbor project pending the disposition of those cases that are listed.
Okay. But, but we don't know if FDOT will or will not move ahead, for example, or any of the state agencies will or will not move ahead based on the decision this evening?
I don't know what those agencies will do or not do.
Okay. I know City Manager Licorice, we don't have Mr. Powell here or anybody from the engineering department. So I was going to ask the, I do know that we've issued grubbing permits before without having all the state permits in hand, just as a courtesy to the developer. And I'm not sure what your inclination would be in that regard here. Would you be inclined to do that or not? If there is a stay, that's a moot point, but if there's not a stay, or if there's not, hasn't even been a request for a stay, would your inclination be to issue a grubbing permit, would it in effect allow clearing of the site?
More than likely. I'd have to get with the attorney and everything, but I don't know why they couldn't move forward if there's nothing to say it.
You would be inclined to issue a grubbing permit without the stay? I mean, what I'm getting at is, we've done that as a courtesy in the past to allow the project to move forward pending the state permits being brought forward.
Again, I have to look at it, and again, Mr. Powell's the head building official, so he'd be really the one to have to make that decision.
You're not really, I mean, are you, you have a question concerning that yourself then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I probably already know the answer to this, but, but it may be that it's probably not even, you know, valid question. But we, if we don't issue a stay and there is these pending, or if we do issue a stay and there's this pending litigation, could we require a bond of the Morgan Group to move ahead despite the stay? In other words, if the commission approves a stay, can the Morgan Group bond whatever damages that might incur by moving ahead, or the stay is a stay? In other words, it's just not going to move?
So it's, they've been given approval by this commission already. There's no legal obligation for them to do anything else to, to move the project forward. You've approved it. So no, they would not be placing a bond, and nor would they be required to place a bond to move forward.
Okay. The next question I have is, and I think I know the answer to that based on discussion you and I had on a different matter concerning this being, the ordinances being a legislative act. If the stay is not granted and construction begins, and then the Circuit Court rules in favor of the concerned citizens and makes it clear that the city erred procedurally or otherwise, can the city be held liable by the Morgan Group, or Walmart for that matter, for their cost and damage because we, the city made a mistake?
I don't see that happening. The city authorized them to move forward with their project. So if they wanted to appeal the decision of the city commission, they could have filed a petition for writ of cert also, challenging any particular condition or approval requirement, and they did not do that. If they move forward with the project, they've expended some money, then they're doing it totally at their own risk.
But if the judge says it's their, their risk, but in, in full faith that the city acted correctly, but if the judge says that the city did not act correctly and Morgan Group proceeded, is the city liable in that matter?
The answer is, in my mind, no. The matter would come back to the city commission for reconsideration of the project, probably. It'll be, there'd be maybe some direction from the Circuit Court as to what the city commission should do that the Circuit Court believed that you didn't do. So the project wouldn't necessarily die. In my mind, it's going to come back to you for further action.
Okay. In, in the future, let's say the city itself, let me just put it this way. Does the city have a right to correct a problem that it discovers that it made at some previous date?
I'm not following your question.
Well, in other words, if, for example, the, the residential plan development was approved and at a later date, the commission recognizes that it perhaps made a mistake in its interpretation of consistency of the comp plan, can it correct that?
It can correct it, but in my mind, that's at the point where you would be subjecting the city to damages.
No, I understand that part. I wouldn't expect it any other way, Mr. Trask, but thank you for that. That's all I have for Mr. Trask. I do have a question for Ms. Graham. Is that appropriate, Mr. Trask?
That was not part of the process that either one of the attorneys was aware of. And so I would, I would leave it to the mayor whether you wanted to allow the questions of the attorneys. I mean, during the normal quasi judicial process, obviously, we allowed that. This is not quasi judicial, by the way, just so they understand. So Mayor, I'll leave that to you.
Well, the, the process was actually communicated to you, every one of us, as well as both parties, and we're going to keep it at that. You heard the presentation that was given by both attorneys, Mr. Commission Vaticiotes. So we're going to stay with that.
Well, I'm not an attorney, Mayor, and quite frankly, I don't understand what Mr. Armstrong wrote. I've stated that to Mr. Degenall today, and I was hoping tonight I would be able to ask questions. But if you're saying that you don't need, you don't have any questions either of what was presented, and, and you're okay with that, then let's go ahead and make a vote, because there's no other way than I can do other than to support the state, because quite frankly, I don't have the answers. Just as somebody said tonight, all the questions have been answered. Well, I've got questions, they're not being answered. But if the procedure's been followed and this is what you want to do, that's fine, Mayor.
No, Commission, Commission Vaticiotes, we had first and second reading. The first reading, it went up to 5:00 a.m. The second one was the 3:00 a.m. All these hours, there was 1,000 questions that they were asking. So as a matter of fact, you asked the most questions than anybody on the board.
Yeah.
You know, and you probably got the most answers.
I didn't get all the answers either.
Right. So we're going to, we're going to follow the process that was recommended by our city attorney. Do you have any other comments?
Pardon me?
Do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any, any additional comments?
I mean, none, none. Mayor, I've got questions, but you're saying that's not going to be allowed to the, either party, is that correct?
No, it's not on a, on a process that we're given.
It's an ad hoc process, but I understand.
Okay. Do you have any, any other comments, any questions?
I just want to clarify that the motion's in the affirmative, and the motion was to make a motion to grant the motion to stay.
Well, if you, yeah, it was an affirmative. When you say yes, which means that you're going to grant the, the stay, if you say no, you do not.
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
No.
Mayor Lozis?
And also, that concludes the regulation session agenda. We'll go to staff comments. Police chief?
I just want to say, today, our agency greeted three assessors from the Commission for Florida Accreditation as we begin a three-day process of them assessing our agency in order to earn re-accreditation with the CFA. Thank you.
City Attorney Trask?
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Huh?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody. City Manager Licorice?
So I'd love to, to try to prepare for next year, some sets of meetings that are set, some sets of meetings that are tentative, and other available dates for this board to decide if they want to use them for meetings. I'd like to use January 12th, I'm starting out with, for a town hall meeting on the American Rescue Plan, so I can meet my February deadline. It's fine to be a, you know, a commission town hall meeting if, if you don't want, I could make a city manager meeting and stuff, but, but I'd say we'd do a commission meeting, and the date I'm looking at is the 12th. The next date on your calendar's already been set. It's one of the off Tuesdays. It would have been one where I'd have asked you that that would have been available for us to have one of the meetings that are listed at the bottom, but that is the date for the candidate forum in the auditorium. So, so that date's not available. There's two other open dates in January, the 19th and the 27th. I reserved February 1st for the commission. As Renee was telling you about, we're thinking of doing a lot of things in the strategic comprehensive plan during the first week of February, which starts January 31st. One of those includes the commission involvement. So I'd like to reserve that off Tuesday, the 1st, and it's just tentative, but we're still working on the schedule. But that whole week, the plan is to hopefully have different meetings with the citizen groups, with the different groups. So I'd like you to try to reserve that off and, and hold that date. And then the other open dates on there are the 9th, 10th, 15th, 16th, and 24th. We're going to decide an hour later if any of the meetings I've listed below, or any other meetings that you want to set, and set one of those dates. So I just wanted to give that to you before the year end to look at and either decide on. And again, some of these dates I'll firm up. The candidate forum is a firm date, so that's the one on here that is firm. So I want to give you that information and here your pleasure.
Mr. Licorice, as far as I'm concerned, I am available on all those days. If you get, please get with Trask and make sure that the calendar is open.
I want to make a comment, is that all right?
Yeah, yeah.
About what City Manager said. I'll make it work. I don't have anything on the books right now. I'm good with the American Rescue Plan Town Hall. When you said city commission town hall or just resident or city manager town hall?
Well, I would say it'd be city, city commission wise, but if, if that wasn't available, you do, I, you know...
So, I mean, I've only been a part of, I was actually a resident in the last city commission town hall, I think we had six years ago, maybe, or longer, seven years ago. So at that, if that's the case, the city commission would be here, but they can't comment at all. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
No, it's like a regular meeting. I think, Tom, what do we, what do we call the last time, a special session or?
Well, you can call it a special meeting, but normally, town hall meetings would be, well, the way I've seen them in the past is, is the city manager or a city staff member basically will just, you know, make a presentation and gather information, gather input, and the commission is present, but they're not actually active. So if you want them active and actually controlling the meeting, I would call it a special meeting and not necessarily a town hall meeting. So...
Again, I just called it. I know the commission had wanted meetings, for instance, on some of the ones below, and, and I think the last time we did one was the Sponge Docks. Now, I forget what we called it, but we did that rather recently. We did a, I think it was a, we called it a town hall, but I think we had to make it a special session. But whether it's a special meeting or not, it's up to the board.
I don't care either way. I just want to make sure there's clarification and understanding what the differences are in that. So I'm happy to do the, the American Rescue Plan. I do think if we're doing one of those meetings at night, I mean, we should throw something else in there, like West Tarpin Avenue is an important part, I think we've all talked about as a commission for quite some time since the city has acquired that land. There's been no plan before it's acquired, there's been no plan once it's acquired, and there's still no plan on it now. So...
For a second item, you mean, on the, on that?
Yeah, for to have two items at night. I mean, I think if we're going to have a town hall or a special meeting for public comments and input, those are two pretty strong areas, I think, to be able to get that in the same night, to at least give you some, for the commission to get information and then also to give you direction on where to go.
Mm-hmm.
So that'd be my suggestion. And I mean, I'm loaded up. I'm happy to load it up, right?
Mayor, may I just make a comment to that? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, I just had a question on the town hall thing. I think that's something we need to get figured out, because we were just talking about the American Rescue Plan money. We said, well, we want a plan, but before we develop that plan, we want more public comment. So I think that town hall should be more public comment driven, and maybe, we just had one pretty recently. I think it was on the Annquoth Development. It was a meeting that we had scheduled for something else, and it was like, and then when we showed up, we said, hey, let's just make this a, a town hall type of event. And we just listened. Are these more informal, where we would have like a special meeting, and it'd be almost like one of those city manager driven ones, and the commission would just show up? Are you saying we can do pretty much anything we want to do?
You can decide what, the one way to envision is you would be up here and I'm up here. You, we open it up to the citizen. We'd invite, you know, we'd publicize it. We'd invite groups, neighborhoods and stuff to give their input for the plan. And then we basically turn the item over to the citizens and have them tell both you and me, you know, what they're looking at with the plan. That would be one method to do it. I think that's what the idea was to do with the West, with the West Tarpin property, was to turn it over to citizens and you as a board and me as a city manager, you know, the items on the agenda, you turn it over to the public comment, and then, you know, you decide if you're just taking the information in, or if you want to make some comments or something. I think, I think it's really a special meeting. I know we've called it kind of a town hall style, just because it's not an agenda item where you do a lot of presentations. I mean, the American Rescue, we would probably make a basic one of what it is and what the categories are covered, but it basically...
Even just that list you provided us at the last meeting of...
Well, by this meeting, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be refined to, to a priority list.
Yeah, that's what I think. I like the idea of maybe combining a couple items in there for the town hall to say, hey, come talk about, I mean, realistically, we could give that presentation and then say, hey, come talk about anything. But for me, I don't know what changed between, you know, last meeting when we talked about the American Rescue Plan money and January 12th, which would be like, I don't know, the day after we just met.
I, I think if we call it a town hall meeting, people will feel more comfortable to provide their input. But if we call it a special session, probably they'll be a little bit reluctant to, to do that, because the objective is to get the people's input.
Comments, yeah. Yeah, so I'm, I'm good with the...
I'd rather go with the town hall meeting, so people will feel comfortable with it, because the meeting is dedicated to them to give us input. If it's a special session or special meeting like that, they probably feel like we run in the meeting instead of them.
Okay. Stay quiet, all right?
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Do we want to add in West Tarpin Ave, or do we want to add in like a portion for just general comments?
Good. I mean, if we have time, we can cover two, but at least we're going to do the one, which is more important right now, to do the, the COVID funding that we got.
Okay.
How we're going to spend the $12 million.
Okay. And then as far as the, as far as the February dates go?
Actually, the goal is the same. We just want to make sure that the residents feel more comfortable with it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with that. As far as the February dates go, is that something that we can just email to you? I don't, I don't know my availability, yes or no on any of these dates.
Well, again, I'm just holding them open. Again, a lot depends on, if we're doing two, that, you know, that would cut out, you know, one of the ones I had thought for the February meeting. So, and I think we can do both those West Tarpin Avenue and the, the American Rescue Plan. I think we can do that in, you know, in an evening and not go real late with those. So they're, they're just an idea. The February ones, we can talk about the January meeting, if we want to set one of these other items or something else for a February meeting. Just I wanted that February 1st date, the way it's laying out to do everything with strategic planning, I want you to kind of hold that date. The rest of them would just be an option. We can decide at the January meeting.
Okay.
But this way, I can get the, I need to get the notice out, start right away to get the notice out for, you know, January 12th.
Right. Mr. Licorice, we also need to start thinking about the, the Decanese Boulevard project, the flooding problem that we've got. We got the funding for it.
We don't have it yet.
Yeah.
We, we've, it's still, it's still in state, waiting for us to get the authority and move forward with it. Yes, I know it.
We, we need to tell them that we move forward with that.
Mayor?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I've got my light on. Y'all have your backs to me. I don't understand what y'all are talking about. What have y'all decided without asking me for anything?
Well, we get to you too, though. I mean, he was Vice Mayor, I mean, excuse me, Vice Mayor spoke first, and then Commissioner Vaticiotes, and then it's you. So what is that you... So what is that you complain about? I'm not sure.
The town hall meeting, is it just going to be your meeting? Is that what was decided? I'm talking about City Manager Licoris.
I thought it was going to be the commission, we, commission would hold the town hall. Especially if we combine the West Harpen Avenue.
Well, just on the last time we had the discussion on the West Harpen Avenue, it was two meetings, if you recall. It was not a special meeting, the commissioners were not present, they could be present, but as Mr. Trask says, they just sit there and observe. And I, in my experience of having sat there, because I'm the junior commissioner and I've sat in these sort of things, I think when we have a meeting such as we have right now, I think it tends to stifle things a bit on the part of the residents. So I would prefer to have it as a staff meeting led by you or whoever you would like, and then if we care to attend, like some of the historic preservation guideline meetings that the Historic Preservation Board had, we can sit in the back and observe. The main point I want to say is that we, I attended the Distant Avenue workshop the other night, and that ran as smooth as a clock. And the one thing they had was a technology, which I know is probably something that we could do very easily, which relied on people's cell phones to actually vote on questions, yes, no, A, B, C, D, which you would prefer, and then it was real time to see actually playing out which were the favorite things, such as our five items that we had on the other night, was establishing the priorities. If we have 50 people or 100 people in here, that cellphone, which is what the case was the other night with regard to what is more important to you, you could see in real time where people were coming out on this, and it helped a consultant, Kim Lee Horn, a great deal, and I think it was a little surprising to see some of the results. If, for those people that didn't have a cellphone, they also had a form that you could check and give it to the staff. So my point is, if we have a town hall meeting, I think that we should, we should, we should, we should make sure that we have some meaningful results out of there to give us some direction in some future meeting, rather than hearing a bunch of comments and each having a sense of which way we're going to go on the priorities. I think we've got the technology for them to be very clear as far as what they want to see first, and I think we need to pose that question. Same thing with the West Harpen Avenue, whether they want it to be a kind of a formal park, whether they'd like to, you know, the residents would like to see the Safford House moved there, or nothing at all. I think that the technology's there, that we can get some very specific guidance, and I think people, if they know that they're going to be voting that night, I think you'll even have a lot more people showing up to do that. That's all I'm suggesting. Did you see that? You weren't, it wasn't televised, but that was a terrific meeting the other night, and I don't think it was something that Kim Lee, very similar to what we did, by the way, on our strategic plan meeting, yeah, but they used cell phones. So there wasn't any additional equipment, somehow the results appeared on the screen here. I thought it was excellent. So if I have a vote, I'd prefer to keep it open just for the residents and have the city manager conduct the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't vote on anything. I'm fine to have it staff-driven.
Not a vote, but just a-
We didn't vote on anything.
An observation, thank you.
On the discussion that we talked about, I think we're all aligned on the same format.
I'm happy to have, if that town hall can be staff-driven, and it'll be more efficient.
I couldn't hear, I mean, I regret it, but I just couldn't hear the discussion, and so, I mean.
It's aligned with, I think we're all aligned on the same-
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah. And I also believe that, you know, the town hall meeting would be more, people would feel more like it's their meeting, and, you know, feel more, it means to be able to provide us with the input, so.
So we're good to have that be staff-driven? We got consensus on that?
Yeah, staff-driven. I'm going to be here, I'm going to be somewhere in the back there, attending the meeting.
We all agree.
Yeah.
We're in agreement.
Yeah.
Consensus.
No, Mr. Licoris, I guess, what day are you thinking about, the January 12th or the 13th?
Yes, I'm thinking the 12th.
The 12th? Everybody's available on the 12th? I am. You guys are working, you guys.
So. The rest of the list is your list of meetings we've been trying to hold for-
Yeah, if it's at night. As long as it's at night, yeah.
So Mr. Licoris, yeah, it looks like the 12th is a good day for all of us.
For the American Rescue Plan only.
West Harpen Avenue.
And maybe you ought to put the West Harpen Avenue as well, if we have time, if time's permitting.
Two hours?
Yeah?
You should, we should have plenty, there should be time.
I think, if we, if we proceed with the technology that Kim Lee Horn did, there's no doubt in my mind that we can get answers on both.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, yes, we're going to concentrate on the first. If we have time, we're going to do the other one as well.
Okay.
Gabriel Licoris?
Yes.
Okay. City Clerk?
I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you. Michelle?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, okay. Vice Mayor Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Merry Christmas to all the residents and the city staff and commission. Really enjoyed the Christmas parade this past weekend. It was great to see, there was a significant amount of people out in the streets, probably the most well-attended parade I've seen in many years, and it was great to be a part of the parade as well this year with my children. That was a really special time to be, to be there and also enjoy the parade after we finished the parade and watched it go by. So it was great seeing everybody there, it was great seeing the town out and the city participating, and Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
No comments, Mayor, thank you. No comments, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead. Where's your light?
Thanks, Mayor. May I, you, may I go?
Of course. Apologizing for that.
I just wanted to say, who's ever left watching, that this week has been, actually, this last couple of weeks has been a tremendous amount of fun. We haven't gotten mired down in politics out in the public, and everybody is really looking forward to the holidays. Quite frankly, I'm very happy that this is our last meeting until early January. I'm going to plan on getting some rest, and I'm sure the public wants to get some rest from us as well. So I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and I guess our next meeting is when, something like the?
The 11th?
The 11th, yeah. So thank you for that. I'll see you all on the 11th.
Sorry that, I mean, I didn't mean to excuse, just, I'm sorry that a-
No, Mayor, please, go ahead.
But as I stated last, at the last meeting, and that on January 7th, day after Epiphany, at 5:00 p.m. right here in the auditorium, we're going to finalize the second phase of our sister city training with Hanya, with Tarpon Springs. So I will keep you up to date. We still have some things that we need to schedule in order to, you know, to finalize the program. As soon as we finalize, we'll make sure everybody gets it. And I also like to thank all the sponsors that we are able to get to sponsor these events that, for the delegation. The delegation is going to come very, very late on the 3rd, probably midnight, and they're going to be here to the, January the 10th. With that, I'd like to wish to everyone Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, filled with love, happiness, and prosperity, and I want to thank everybody for being here, and also, I want to thank my city commissioners, my fellow solar commissioners for their hard work and their dedication. Maybe we don't agree always, but that's the way it should be, but we are working together for the good of Tarpon Springs. Thank you, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Anita, before you leave, I've got to ask you a question.
Mayor, you need to adjourn the meeting?
Mayor, adjourn the meeting.
Meeting's adjourned at 10:03.